All right, we were just in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the MTA. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. Do we have any public input? Sharon Tetro, well, you and out yourself.
Hi, I'm Sharon Tetro. Ooh, sorry, I'm really here tonight as a cheer parent. And I have a few things I want to say. Cheer has been a club for the last two years while my daughter has been a part of it. And it used to be a varsity sport, before that it was a club. There's been a lot of discussion over the last two years that my daughter's been a part of it as to why it's a club rather than a sport. Things came to a head a bit today, which is why I am here. It's already been resolved, but I decided I would still come anyway. Just because I think it's important to resolve for next year. My daughter's graduating this year, she won't be a part of it, but I do think it's important that the school make it a varsity sport again. For a variety of reasons. One was, and I'll specify which things are rumor that I know because I'm sure the truth is somewhere in between and I've only had some discussions. When my daughter joined last year, so 2017, it was listed as a varsity sport. About four of us had signed up as a varsity sport, we were refunded our money. Because we were told it was changed to a club. I think that there's probably a large difference of opinion is if you ask the girls why it was a club versus if you ask Mr. Scott why it was a club. I did have a discussion with him about it today and I would just encourage everybody to talk to him about it. He was very fair and honest and everything with me about it and I have nothing but positive things to say about that. And what was relayed to me was that it really had to do with you need to have a minimum amount of kids in order to sign up for it to be a varsity sport in order for it to be fiscally correct. For the school system, totally get that. But I do know as a cheer parent, I had been told repeatedly by my daughter not to bother to sign up because we were going to get to have it to be a club, so it would only be $25 rather than $250. And so I think that is a reason why a lot of the kids didn't sign up. Because there was this rumor amongst them that it would be cheaper if they did it that way. I didn't listen to her and I signed her up anyway. Got my money back. And then it was a club again this year. And again, just in my conversation with Mr. Scott, it really has a lot to do with the numbers and how it works. But one of the reasons what I wanted to bring this up is that the girls might think it costs $25 to be a cheerleader, but they're not adding in everything else. Because when it's a club, it's actually more expensive for the families than if it was a varsity sport. Because when it's a club, we have to buy the girls their own uniform, it costs $120. We have to buy them the jacket that they have to wear because the uniforms are really made for, like if you cheered in the summer and we all know that that's not the case. So we have to pay $70 for jackets, we have to pay $30 for pants. We have to buy both Medfield bow and then October pink bow that costs $30, just right there, that's $250. Plus we're paying $25 to be a club, so it's $275 right off the bat. So it's not cheaper. And I think that one of the reasons why the girls thought it should be cheaper is because there definitely are girls on the team that I think would potentially qualify for some kind of scholarship for the athletic fee. And I think that's why a lot of them, the discussion happened. So, but I don't think that that should be a part of it. Because if, if there really are people that would qualify for that, they don't get that when they have to buy the uniform and everything else. And, you know, my daughter's cheer uniform is nice and pretty and everything, but it's just going to start being a Halloween costume next year. And that's silly. So, so that's that. Then on top of that, I got a list of the expenses that the cheer team is also paying for out of pocket right now. Because it's a club, the school system doesn't cover anything. And so the girls are having to fundraise in order to cover the competition fees, which are 300. There were tank tops that they were given at the beginning of the year, which was 200. They had to buy her new palms for 110. The music, they have to buy the music to create it for halftime every year, that's $100. And then there were costs for the banners. So it is about $750 to $800 that the girls are having to fundraise for, plus pay for all of their things. When, if they had just paid the $250 upfront and if you guys bought uniforms and let's say they lasted for three or four years. Net, net, I don't think it would be a money loser for the school, which is what I think was the fear when there was only four that signed up to begin with. But last year they were 18 and this year they're 17. So, that's it. But then my other non-monetary issues I have with it not being a sport is earlier this year, the girls were practicing out on the field and there happened to be a soccer game going on at the same time. And the girl stunt, one of the girls fell, she hurt her knee and they went over to get Maria to help. And the initial response was, well, you're not a sport, you're only a club, I can't come over. Granted, she did end up coming over, but I think that that caused a lot of stress on their ends. There's questions that go between internally with the yearbook. The captains were approached by the yearbook and said, you're not a sport, so we can't put you in the sports. But you're not really a club because you don't make year rounds, so we can't put you in the yearbook. I think they've put them in the yearbook, so I'm not gonna, but it just, I don't need these discussions necessarily. So that's that. And then just the equal recognition of the sport in general. I think that they feel like they're second-class citizens a bit. And it would be nice if somebody tweeted out that they had a competition for people to go to. And then the thing that brought it to a head, which is already resolved, is the girls did qualify for regionals and then there was a big discussion as to how they were going to get there. Because normally it's a warrior wagon issue. Because since it's a club, there is no funding. So they take the warrior wagon, which is great, they love, believe me, don't stop that, they want that regardless. But the coach normally drove it, but the coach can't drive it on Sunday. That has been resolved and they're going to get there and that's great. But I guess my message in general is that, I don't know if anything else besides cheer fits into a bucket like this. But when the MIA has cheer as a sport, it would be nice if it was a sport.
Thank you, Sharon.
Sharon, just so I understand, when it stopped being a sport, it's your understanding and I know you're kind of hearing it from
Yeah.
kids.
Well, I can tell you what Mr. Scott told me today.
Sign up so that it would become a club because then it would be cheaper for them?
That's what I know from a parent of a child perspective, yes. When, from talking to Mr. Scott today, he told me that he had expressed to the coach that the girls had to sign up by a certain deadline or else he was going to be forced to change it to a club. And that's what he did, because only four people had signed up at that point. I just know from a parent of a child that was involved in that, people were told, at least amongst the kids, hey, if we don't sign up, it's going to be cheaper. And so
Can you clarify for me how many kids are in it again?
This year there are 17, last year there ended up, last year there ended up being 18, but only four had signed up initially.
And what does Mr. Scott say is like the go number?
He told me 12 is his break even. Or not necessarily break even, he thought that that was his minimum he should have. I know that when Mr. Scott started here, it was a club. I mean, I can remember after my kids were little and there wasn't cheer. And so I think that there's a long story about how cheer came to be. And I think it totally makes sense why it was a club to be. And Mr. Scott did get a lot of the background from the previous athletic director and so he's awesome. I mean, he was really nice and I emailed him today and I just asked him, I told him I was tired of hearing rumors from everybody and I would love for him to just tell me why.
Really? That happens.
It does, yeah, it does. And so, you know, and he actually probably called me within like a half an hour of getting the email. And we had a nice conversation and I would suggest everybody just hear it from him as to why. But, and I get his, I get his reasons why it probably needs to be 12, but I don't think that that's been an issue. And then I would say that potentially to save the school some money, there might be an opportunity. I mean, you've got 17 girls on this team right now that have all bought their own uniforms. And they will probably, if you wanted to turn it back into a sport and you don't want to pay full price for uniforms, there may be some parents that might be willing to sell them back.
Sharon, can I ask one other question?
Maybe.
And I, and you don't necessarily have to know this, but I just want to kind of know this as well. Is cheer would be open to both young men as well as young women, is that correct?
Yeah, so that would be my understanding, yeah.
Currently, the membership is only younger?
Currently, currently the membership is all female. But I will tell you from going to the TVL competition last weekend, I know NADA had a male on their team and I don't see any reason why there wouldn't be. Similar with, just I'll plug gymnastics, I don't see there any reason why that couldn't be either. I know that on the, on the listing, like at our school, it says that it's a girls gymnastics team. But I do know last year, we did have a male come to the initial night. I think when he saw he was the only one, he didn't sign up. But I wish he would have, because if you have ever gone to any of the Mads meets, there are males from other schools that do compete. I honestly, from what I understand, the gentleman that came last year that decided not to when he realized that he couldn't do rings and pommel horse and he would have to learn how to do uneven bars and balance beam, that was when he was out. Because they do only do the traditionally girls gymnastics events. That I have no idea why you'd have to ask.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
That's MIA.
It's a MIA thing that I don't know, but but they can rock it on floor, I'll tell you that, I've seen it.
I guess, you know, as we put together the budget, next year's fiscal budget, you know, we always look at revisit our athletic fees and we just raise them. I'm not suggesting, we look at them to raise them again. But we do, we do have a number of sports that are sort of hanging out there as provisional sports now. I can think of at least esports, gymnastics and
Ski.
skiing are hanging out there as provisional sports where we have to kind of make, at some point make a decision whether we're going to
So in terms of the Alpine skiing, MIA just approved another two years for the collaboration with Ashland.
But maybe we should, you know, in the context of the budget, I know there's a lot that goes around with, you know, not paying either a coach or, I guess, is it the same person who coaches it, whether it's a club or?
Well, I mean, I would assume and I have no idea because I didn't, I was, I was going to do my due diligence and look at the budget, at the contract before I came in. I assume that there is a fee difference here for what you would pay a club advisor versus a coach for that spot. So I would certainly think you would need to take that into account. So, yeah.
But I do think there, I mean, at some point there's some issues where, it sounds like a little, not today, but back when it first happened, a little bit out of the athletic department's hands where kids just weren't signing up.
Right, and right, but then they all did it anyway and then they were all like, okay, give me $120 for a uniform and $70, you know, like it just
Sharon, wasn't it club for the most part and then varsity for two years?
Yeah, my understanding was it started as club and one thing that Mr. Scott had said to me was that when it started as club, it was about 40 kids initially when it was club. And his understanding was that one of the reasons why it started as club was because there were some individuals on the team that also played maybe field hockey or soccer and they weren't allowed to be on two sports.
Right.
And so that was why it was club to start with. And then a group of the girls that were on it as club came and asked to be a varsity sport. And then it became that and was that for a couple of years and now it's been cheer. I will say the rumor, which Mr. Scott did not tell me, so I put this in the rumor bucket. The girls are all convinced that once you're a club, you have to be a club for two years and then you can be considered a varsity sport again. But I think they've made that up.
I think they made that up. Especially when it was varsity before, it's been varsity since I've been here, so it's been recent.
Yes, I think it's been varsity, I think, since Rachel's been here.
Right, definitely.
Anyway, because I feel like maybe while Scott was here, was maybe the last year it was club. So, yeah, I think those are my major points, but
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Sharon.
You hate me if I ditch you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ditch away.
Seriously?
Mic dropped.
Thank you, no offense. Anyone else for public input?
Jerry Potts, later on the agenda, I know there's going to be some discussion of aptegy. Is there going to be public participation or discussion questions during that period or?
We could, yes, absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
That'll save me from talking now.
Sure, yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Oh, Jen.
So I figured I'd just ask you guys real quick.
State your name, please.
You have to identify yourself.
I'm Jennifer Hearn. So as you guys know, the projections of the numbers of the children coming into the schools is very high considering what they are right now. For the class of 2033, there's 30 more kids expected for just kindergarten. And then the year after that, for the class of 2034, about 40 kids for that kindergarten. So you're like talking about 70 extra kids at Memorial roughly. I guess my question is, and it's probably not
Jen, all right, can you say those dates again?
I think it's, maybe I, I think the class of 2033, is that right? In two years, in two years, the kids will be in kindergarten in two years. So I know this is probably something you guys have already discussed. I just had, one is hoping you could maybe inform me and other people who are interested in this topic, what the, what you guys are planning to deal with that population explosion at Memorial considering the structural limitations of the school and the fact that Dale won't be ready, you know. So did you guys have a plan for that or are you working on a plan?
So we talked about it a couple of meetings ago. One of the things that, I guess we look at it a few ways. One is, you know, you can certainly try to spend a few million dollars and add some modules on there if you want to do that. I don't know where you put them, but you could put them out in the field, I guess, over by, between Dale Street and Memorial. That's one way of doing it. Another way of doing it, which I'm not in favor of, is getting rid of full-day kindergarten, going back to half-day kindergarten and fit the kids in that way. I'm not in favor of that. The thing that we've been talking about and we need to obviously get into more detail of that as we get closer is looking at restructuring our current elementary schools so that some kindergarten kids go to Memorial and some may go to Wheelock. So that we split that up a little bit. And not neighborhood schools, but split up kindergarten in first and second grade and between a couple of schools instead of having them all go through there. And then meet again, once they get to the new school.
Okay.
So that's, we're looking at that structure right now too, because that gives us the most flexibility. In fact, MSBA talked to us about that, that's one of the things they recommend, just looking at doing that.
All right.
Because they're concerned about capacity like you are and we are, certainly.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. So you, so you guys are on it, that makes me feel good. Just checking. And then the other thing is, I was kind of curious about, I've only had the experience of Memorial and Wheelock right now because I have littler kids. But if you guys have ever explored the option of a K through, or in this case, pre-K through 12, curriculum mapper across schools so that parents, teachers and students can have the same platform from year to year to access, say, their homework or their state standards and so forth. Like my personal experience right now, I mean, I used to write textbooks, so I could easily just look up the state standards and know what my kids are learning, but I'm not going to do that. But I think a lot of parents are wondering like, oh, well, what are we learning? And it changes from teacher to teacher. And I mean, my kids have had rock star teachers and that's fine, so I've always had that information. Whether it be like the Seesaw app, which is a nice little app, you know, but it's not robust in really what the full curriculum is. Or, you know, the papers and handouts that are sent home with the teachers from weeks. Depends on the teacher. Like I said, I had great communication and that's not a complaint. I'm just wondering if it, especially, this is for older grades more, my, like my question is, to kind of ease the transition between schools and help teachers. Because I personally, a decade ago when I was teaching, we had it at my school and it was so easy. I loaded up everything I needed, it was right there. Everyone could access it, follow teachers, especially because you do your clusters and so forth. I just, and I've also had some high school parents kind of communicate to me, just in casual conversation, how there has been a big cultural jump from the middle school to the high school. And finding and accessing information is very different. So I just thought, well, if it's seamless, you know, and it's everyone's doing the same thing, it might just be easier for students and parents and teachers. But I know that does cost some money, I don't know how much. Sorry, I talked too much.
No, no, I mean, I think it's a great point. I think one of the things that, you know, we're looking at is our curriculum person right now is working a couple of days a week and he's putting together a curriculum calendar so that we're doing curriculum review all the time. So we have a six-year calendar going where they do curriculum review. I would say that we've worked real hard and the teachers have worked really hard at the elementary level to be more consistent. And, you know, not cookie cutter, but consistent approaches. We look, we did that with mathematics, now doing that with science. And Jamie Callahan's done some great work with the language arts piece on that. You know, as I think we're, it may not be a written document and something you can easily search online, but it's there. The communications, they were teachers, common playing time happens every week, which never happened before, you know, a couple of years ago. So there's a lot of great conversation going on with that. Teachers now are one of our half-days a year and now they meet between buildings. So they have conversations about curriculum instruction, also students too. Which is something that's so important, as you know, with that collaboration piece for elementary teachers. In our last meeting, Robert had mentioned to the school committee and everyone else that was here that one of the things that they're looking at at the high school level through the NEAS process is to get a full written curriculum at all, you know, subject areas. So that's something that they're working on as well. So it's all in the works, it's, it might feel a little disjointed as a parent, I understand that, but
I'm not, I'm not, again, I'm not really concerned about that. I'm just like, I mean, my background is technology and innovation, so I'm just thinking about leveraging technology to make things easier. That's all. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Anything else? Public input, no? All righty, we'll move on to the approval of the October 22 minutes, please.
Madam Chair, we reviewed the minutes from October 22nd and I move that they be approved as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. True pass. New business. High school Model UN club conference trip.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet was a letter from Robert asking you to approve this trip. We have, we have two teachers, Rachel Buckingham, Imperial Oasis, who chaperone and work with our students on the Model UN. Last year it was at BC, this year it's at Brown University. And because it's out of state, certainly your policy recommends, or your policy requires us to have you approve that. I know it's coming up very quickly and they did not get the, the information to our teachers until last week. So it's, it's kind of late. But again, the students will attend the conference, there'll be many other schools in the area representing various countries tasked with dealing with particular world issues or concerns. Eight members of the Model UN club have opted to participate in an upcoming overnight conference between November 9th and 11th hosted by Brown University in Providence. Students will be staying in nearby Biltmore Hotel on Friday, Saturday night and commuting to the university each morning. And then there's a description of the, from the website and then the list of students that are attending.
And Peter's actually
Peter is one of them, so.
Do you want to add a sentence or two about it?
Sure. So as Mr. Parker said, it is this weekend, the 9th through 11th. And eight of us from the club will be going. We've paid all of our own delegate fees, travel fees, hotel expenses. And what the conference consists of is four three-hour simulations. One Friday, two Saturday and one Sunday morning. And each delegate has been assigned a position in a committee. And all of us are in different committees. And so for an example, I've been assigned Park Su-Gil, excuse my pronunciation. But he's a South Korean diplomat and I'll be participating in the Korean bilateral talks. And so just an example of things that will be talked about during these talks are military de-escalation, the North Korean nuclear program and economic cooperation between the two countries on the peninsula. And some other committees that kids from Medfield have been assigned are the World Health Organization, United Nations Women and the Pacific Islands Forum, which talks about and debates solutions for climate change. So it's going to be, we're really looking forward to the trip, we're all really very excited. We've all written our position, position papers for the trip, which we submitted already and to our chairs of our committees. And we're looking forward to a fun weekend.
Great.
How do we get them there?
So we'll be taking the commuter rail to Providence.
Brilliant. And cheap, huh?
Well, they pay for it, right?
Exactly, yeah.
One of the reasons we, we as a committee, one of the reasons that our policy is that we approve out of state is because they're separate. Usually there's different insurance certificates for the bus company, so that's why I asked. But that's great. It's probably the fastest way down there.
Hopefully.
Unless you took the commuter rail today.
Slippery rail.
I'm not joking, two hours and 45 minutes to get to work today.
So do we have a motion to approve the
I moved to, I asked, I moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have fun. All right, next one, R and D presentations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have a group from Memorial here today who are going to talk a little bit about what they did with their SEL R and D. I know Pam Forster is going to start us off. I'll get that, oh, it's already up here.
Thank you. Oh, awesome. Do I press the red one, the red button?
Right on the side, left to the right.
Oh, perfect, all right, thank you. So I'm Pam Forster, I'm the school psychologist at Memorial School. And this summer we did an R and D focusing on the social-emotional learning curriculum at Memorial School. We had a preschool teacher, Sally DeGeorge, a kindergarten teacher, Paula Grace, a first-grade teacher, Leslie Seer, one of our PE teachers, Herb Grace, one of our reading specialists, Laura Singer, all be part of it. We were trying to represent as many disciplines as possible when looking at this. So what we did is, we tried to, we adopted a new social-emotional learning program called Choose to Be Nice, which I'll explain in a minute. But we aligned it with our current social-emotional learning curriculum open circle. They really kind of play together nicely. A lot of our, or really the whole school, especially in our preschool utilizes social thinking as well. So they're all very similar concepts and messages. So we just tried to kind of put it on a curriculum map of sorts that aligns the different topics and lessons, which is great. Choose to be nice focuses on nine different values, respect, honesty, kindness, acceptance, friendship, responsibility, teamwork, courage and patience. We, so throughout the year, each month has a different value that we are focusing on. Our students will learn about it within their, within their main classrooms. But our specialist teachers are also utilizing lessons that also focus on these nine values. So we're really trying to make it a whole community feel and everybody is focusing on the same things. MCPE also funded a grant for us that gives all of the classroom teachers for each grade level, the guidance department, the psychologist department and a set for our library of the books that go with the Choose to Be Nice program, which is exciting. So people have the materials they need to teach. The curriculum and they, we also funded, or they also funded different recognition stickers that will kind of go along with these values. So kids will be recognized for demonstrating these different values throughout the year. And then I just included some pictures because that's really the fun part of this. As, that was our kickoff assembly there on the left and all the, all the students and staff in the building signed that banner pledging to choose to be nice. This is one of our classes who chose to be nice on PIN. We also had parents make a pledge to choose to be nice as well and sign a banner in their own classroom. That's our bulletin board, that's right across from the banner that told, that's up in the hallway. Our value of the month this month is kindness. Just another classroom lesson of kids learning about responsibility in Mrs. Grace's class. This was a first-grade lesson that everybody was able to talk about what respect means and what respect looks like at Memorial School. And for Halloween, all of our teachers dressed up as the Choose to Be Nice mice that go along with the nine values. So each value has a nice mouse that goes along with it, which is cute for the, for the little ones at Memorial. And that's it. That was super fast, but that's our SEL program and that's how we aligned it. Memorial.
You talk about the video too?
Oh, yes, that was Each person had a different value to talk about, and we had some of our current or former graduates of Medfield High create them. It's up on my Twitter, it's pinned there if you want to go check it out. But the kids loved it when they saw it, especially Jim from Park Street Books, he got a big rise out of the kids that day. But it was great to be able to show the kids that, you know, this is really about creating a Choose to Be Nice community, and that, you know, even while we're teaching them it, as adults, we're also focusing on those values too, so.
Super. How has it been in the classrooms?
It's great. We do it once a week in my classroom. We sit down in the open circle, have an open circle with all the kids about respect, responsibility, and they love the nine nice mice. I have a bulletin board in my classroom with the nine nice mice, and they're picking it up. They're really enjoying, can relate to the little characters, and when you brought up the video, something that I found very touching in our video was when William Johnson was one of the speakers on the video, speaking about courage. And it just hit home about, we knew William when he was in preschool, all the way through high school, and there was a kid that showed courage throughout his whole year at Medfield. So, and another one was firefighter talking about teamwork, how firefighters can't go into a fire unless they can count on their fellow firefighters to help them. It was, I really loved the video that we put together for community members coming together and talking about all these values, and how they're important outside of school, too.
Yep, absolutely. And when they made the pledge, everybody got, I made the Choose to Be Nice promise bracelet. So, and we'll have kind of different days throughout, different days throughout the year.
I have a green one.
Yes, yep. So, we're excited about it, and the kids are loving it, and the staff is loving it as well. It's kind of brought staff members together as well, which is awesome.
That's something we focused on too. I think this summer was not only trying to get the kids together, but us as a staff, we're all so stressed and busy throughout the school day, we as a committee are trying to get the staff together socially too, because it's just as important for us to get together and try to relieve some of the stress. And that's a focus that we have too, in socially getting together staff members.
I have a quick question. Can you tell me specifically, as you were looking at your social-emotional learning within Memorial School, and you were looking at the social thinking work that you've been doing and the open circle work, what was it that made you think that you needed to
have a third layer or a third part of that puzzle? And what do you think it brought to the curriculum that you had been feeling was missing?
Yeah, I'm getting mad on. So I think initially, and we've been honestly talking about these sorts of things for the past few years, about how just something was missing in terms of our social-emotional learning curriculum. So we think that what's going on in the classrooms with open circle and social thinking is fantastic, and open circle is great, they provide a great training for teachers that all the teachers are sent to when they come on board, but it really wasn't getting at that whole school community, bringing everybody together, focusing on the same kind of values or character traits, however you want to describe it. And we all, we also gained feedback from the whole staff before we kind of went into this work over the summer, and a majority of the feedback was, we need something that is kind of whole school, a whole school message that will bring us together as a community, and some consistency for the kids. So, you know, in gym class, they talk about respect and responsibility. Our music teacher is creating different songs for each mouse and that sort of thing. So it's really kind of coming together across content areas, which is awesome.
That's wonderful to hear. Great, thank you.
And we're doing a parent workshop, and one of the parents even commented that, it's one of their, they were talking to their children, probably not in their best way, and they said, "You're not being like, is it Ryan the respectful mouse?"
Ryan the respectful mouse.
You know, being like Ryan the respectful mouse. So it's coming back at home, and your parents are hearing it.
Is that my high school senior?
Part of the curriculum also provides home link connections, so we've been sending that out to parents once a month with our Thursday packet, which has been great too, so that way they're hearing it at home as well, so.
Can I just ask, you know, and I should have asked this last meeting, we had a lot of similar presentations, is there anything you're having to cut out of your teaching day to fit this in? I mean, it's great that we, you know, have you doing all this R&amp;D, but it seems like we keep adding, we're not adding, not adding any time to your teaching day. Is it, are you integrating it into other things you're doing, or are they replacing something?
It's been integrated with the open circle, so we coordinated it with the open circle schedule that we put it all together so that the double D's went with responsibility. Dangerous and destructive was tied in with Riley the responsible mouse. So we tied them together, the open circle and the Choose to Be Nice.
Right, we didn't add any time, right? We said it was the once a week.
Once a week, yeah.
Great. Thanks for donating.
Is once a week enough, you think?
I think, well, I think the once a week is the dedicated explicit instruction time that kids are getting. Of course, me as a psychologist, I think it should, you know, be all the time, but I guess we have to learn to read and stuff too. But I think that it does happen throughout the day, and I think through this, we've had a lot of conversations with our principal, Missy, and, you know, she has really worked hard at kind of encouraging the teachers that it's okay, that, you know, if they're coming off the playground and there was an issue, like, stop and deal with that. So I think teachers have just been kind of, almost been looking for that permission to be able to stop and really focus on those things, because if we don't have the social-emotional learning piece kind of under control, for lack of a better word, you know, kids aren't available for their academic instruction. And I think the administration as a whole in the district has really focused on that, and kind of giving staff, like, we want you to be focusing on this.
Encouraging more of it on a daily basis.
Exactly. So, that in-the-moment teaching happens all the time throughout the day across the building. So, I think it's been a good avenue for us.
Any challenges that you've found?
Not, I wouldn't say any major challenges so far. I think we're still kind of looking at ways to add to it, and kind of make it our own in terms of kind of what our families need, what our kids need, but we're kind of taking that as it comes throughout the years we go through each value, but...
I really appreciate the parental reach out, because if that common language can be spilled into the home, it's actually extremely powerful, and using it from WeLock.
Yep, absolutely.
So, it's something that could obviously carry over from second to third. We have some tough transitions with the K1 school, 2, 3 school, and so on, so if that common language can carry on, K-5, it's very powerful.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I think that's definitely something that we've been talking about and we hope for, whether it's the Choose to Be Nice or, but...
Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Do we have another R&amp;D, or...
We don't.
Okay, okay, super. Thank you very much. All right, the coordinated program review.
Mary's next, she's back again.
Oh, Mary!
Can't get enough.
That's a tough act to follow though, I'm not going to lie. Coordinated program review after Choose to Be Nice is... I'll try to...
I read the report.
I'll try to throw a little pizzazz in there, but, I know. I should have borrowed their costumes or something.
It's interesting.
It is very interesting.
I think it's incredibly interesting.
I think, anyway. So I am here to talk about the coordinated program review. So every six years, the department comes in to kind of do a thorough review of programs within each district. So this past year, Medfield was, for my sake, very lucky enough to go through a full program review for the special education department, for civil rights, and for English learner education. There are a wide variety of kind of things that they look at when they're coming through, particularly for special education, there are 38 different criterion that they're looking at. For civil rights, 27 criterion, and for English learner education, there are 14. So it's a very thorough process that takes almost a full year to kind of complete the entire process. So the ways that it, that is done is first, we complete a self-assessment. Basically, we upload evidence for all of the standards and kind of criterion that they're looking for. So we're showing the documentation showing how Medfield is meeting each of these criterion, and we make sure that we provide the specific special education records that they request as well. So they can say that they want specific cases, they can say that they want students that meet specific criteria, they list a variety of ways, and we provide those. They typically try to have a variety of grade levels, a variety of disabilities, a variety of different levels of need. Then, they come in for an onsite visit. During this, they kind of try to do a very comprehensive look of everything that the district has. This can be interviews with administration, with the instructional staff, they try to interview students, they try to interview teachers, they try to interview parent advisory council representatives, they try to get a full understanding of kind of all of the key players. They then continue to review and often will pull, seeing if they see something, they might want to ask for some more evidence on something. So it's a pretty thorough process where people are just kind of continually checking in with the department and making sure that everything that they have in order to represent these programs, they have at their fingertips. They continue to review all of these, they also do surveys of students and of parents, and then they do a lot of observations by going into the programs, going into the classrooms. And then they kind of take all of this information and bring it back and put together a very thorough report. So this was the overall results. As I said, there's a significant number of criterion that we were being assessed on, and as you can see, almost all of the criterion have been met. There are a few, within special education, there was only one finding of partial implementation. For civil rights, there were six partial implementation and two not implemented. And for English learner education, two partial implementation and one implementation in progress, which I will touch on, kind of the differences on each of those areas as we move along as well. After this, we also had Matthew Nixon, who was the point person for the review. He came in and met with Superintendent Marsden, as well as Jessica Riley, for a meeting with us just to kind of go over results. Above and beyond, one of the best things that he said was that Medfield did great. We really, you know, did what they were hoping for. He said he really enjoyed his time here, really enjoyed meeting everyone, really enjoyed the conversations that he was able to have, and the programs that he was able to see, and really enjoyed kind of just reading about Medfield and getting more to know about it. With that, it's a review, and part of that is that our program can grow with that, and that's why I say, you know, I kind of have the benefit of reaping the reward of everyone kind of putting all the work in, and now I have the results, and I can kind of start to guide the department as a result. So for me, it's really a very timely report and something that I'm kind of excited about moving into the next action, which is what we sat down with Matthew about, and working together to determine basically kind of what we think are root causes for the findings, as well as trying to put together some corrective action. So actually, we submitted the corrective action for all of those this afternoon, and they then will come back as to whether the corrective action is what they're looking for, and then they set out progress reports for us. So it's kind of a wonderful setup for me again, where, you know, I get to implement changes and have the support of the department checking in. It was a very supportive process, and I think Dr. Marsden mentioned this in his blog, where he was saying that, you know, the process has kind of changed over time, where the department really felt as if it was a little bit of a "I gotcha" before, and now go figure it out on your own, to what was a very supportive meeting that we had this time. It was really, you know, this is what we found, and we want to help you get to the full state of compliance, and in fact, we've sat down and together at the department put together all of these toolkits and ways to support you. So it was definitely a different field to a review that I've had in the past, which was exciting as well. So the first review kind of dealt with special education and the explicit professional development that we are offering to all staff within the district, especially about accommodating diverse learners and diverse learning styles. So while we were able to show that there's a lot of professional development, it's not really a universal professional development across the district, which again, as I said, is kind of an ideal thing to come in and find out that you get to help create some of the professional development that will be utilized for all staff throughout the district. So our corrective action is that we're going to be working as an administrative team within the special education team to develop some of this professional development, and then bringing it to the administrative leadership team to kind of discuss how we're hoping for a rollout, and how we'd like to have it come to fruition, and then having all of it go out throughout buildings so that everyone is receiving the same development throughout. Then the other thing that we are trialing this year is at the high school, and this is something where we're going to be collecting data as we go through this. The high school coordinator is going to be setting aside one period per week where she's available for teachers to come in and check in with her, and kind of say, "I have this, I have this paper that I'm trying to differentiate," or "I have a lesson and I don't know how to reach all of my learners, this is kind of what my end goal of my lesson is, how can you help me with this?" And our hope is really, just as they're saying, we want to work on that collaboration, but we also want to build the capacity within teachers themselves. So my hope is that if we offer this weekly, teachers will be able to check in, will be able to bring materials, will be able to have conversations, and then we'll be able to roll that out within their classrooms a little bit more seamlessly and continuously throughout the district. So we are trialing it at the high school this year. Again, as I said, we're going to be keeping some data, just in terms of who's checking in, how often, materials that they're bringing, and my hope is that if we have the hopeful audience that we, that I'm hoping for, we can kind of try to find a way that we can make this happen in all buildings throughout the district. Because I think, I think one of the most difficult things is that we're always asking general education teachers to kind of, you know, wear all hats, and they need to be able to differentiate materials and reach so many different learners in so many different ways, and it's something that we go to graduate school for. So it takes us a whole masters to really be able to specialize in it in an individual basis, but we're expecting gen ed teachers to be able to do it in a more holistic way. So I'm hoping with this, we can kind of support and collaborate and work together to make that happen. The first civil rights one was in regards to extracurricular activities, and the fact that the policy just needs to be updated to include some of the more protected language. So that, again, will be something that we will bring to school committee to discuss in regards to policies. The next one was about handbooks and the code of conduct. So this says that a review of documents indicated that student codes of conduct don't contain procedures for due process in disciplinary proceedings, and making sure that we allow all students to have that full due process and procedures to, and make sure that if they are suspended or expelled, that they have the option to have some type of continued education throughout this time. So again, this is something that we're going to make sure that we spell out what these opportunities would be, and we'll have to update the handbooks accordingly. This is in terms of the bullying and intervention and prevention. So this, again, is another area that needs to be updated within the handbooks, explicitly kind of discussing the fact that first, staff members could also be responsible for the bullying and harassment, and where people would turn to for that. And then also kind of working on more documentations and ways that we can address this continually throughout. So this, again, will have to be updated within all of the handbooks. For this one, there is, we need to develop a school-wide education service plan that allows for services for those students that are suspended and expelled. So if they, we need to kind of spell out exactly what those services will be, and... So this, again, will have to be updated within all of the handbooks. For this one, there is, we need to develop a school-wide education service plan that allows for services for those students that are suspended and expelled. So if they, we need to kind of spell out exactly what those services will be and make sure that they have the right to make academic progress, even if they have disciplinary suspension or expulsion. And then for this, this is in terms of students that are leaving at the age of 16, but have not at that time received a diploma or certificate of completion. So one thing is that we are sending letters, but we are not offering them two different times to come in and meet with the principal or the superintendent to discuss this. And then another thing is that we want to continually follow up with these students and hope that they will take advantage of kind of educational opportunities that they still have the right to. So we will just need to kind of look through and find out any students in the past few years that have left at, after 16 and have not had a diploma or certificate of completion, and reach out to those students, and then develop some systems within our own department in working with guidance to make sure that if there is a student that meets these criteria, that we are aware of this, so that we can continue to offer letters yearly, to make sure they know that, that there is an ability to, to reach out and continue to make educational progress.
Have we had, how many students have we had leave school?
None. But it is something that...
No, I'm not suggesting...
Yes. And I'm not, I have not done a thorough review of, you know, I, I know that last year, there was not anyone that had done it. So I, for the terms of what they're asking, is that we would look back two years. So for corrective action, I had said that we would look back two years and then continue to have a monitoring tracking system, because I think even if someone did happen to leave, we would most definitely meet with them and have a conversation, but we wouldn't necessarily let them know that those opportunities are there. And from past districts that I have worked in, a lot of those students that leave at 16, they're not really ready to hear that message anyway. And so the fact that we need to continue to reach out, to me, is something that I think is really positive, because a lot of times, the students that are leaving at 16, they hit 20, and that's when they kind of say, "Oh, I, I think now I actually am ready to access those educational supports." And so the fact that we will continue to reach out with, to them until they're, you know, 22, makes us hopefully reaching a little bit more of the people that may be struggling in a, at a more difficult time. So this is training regarding Civil Rights. So this was another partially implemented. So all of these ones that I've kind of gone through before, we do a, a large portion of it, but there is still something that we are not fully hitting on. So that's, for this one, what we do not currently do is talk about the prevention of this discrimination and harassment, and we don't kind of provide exact ways for people to respond to it. So while we do have training that is offered every year, and we do have things that people are signing off on, the most recent change to the DESI criterion is that not only will you be telling them about bullying and harassment and kind of helping people to know who to turn to and where to report it, but you're also going to make sure that they know how to prevent it, and some strategies and methods to responding when you are brought that kind of case. So that's where we'll need to update our professional development to address all of those areas as well. This is where they are finding that we are not implementing. So the curriculum review, previously, what the department wanted is to make sure that the curriculum that you were bringing in for kind of all of your core curricular areas was being vetted to make sure that it was not, didn't have, kind of have any biases or anything. That, the district has been doing, but what they are now opening it up to is truly anything that's being used within the classroom, and that could be a website, that could be an article, that could be a discussion that you lead as a teacher, needs to be analyzed to kind of see if there are any of those implicit and explicit biases that are being reflected. So again, this is a huge change that the department has brought, and rather than just kind of saying, "This is a huge change, good luck," they actually sat down with us and developed an entire toolkit and system of ways to roll out exactly how they would like you to do this, because this could be done well, or it could be done, you know, where we just tell everyone really, you know, "Think about your biases and see if you have any..." And, and then say, "Yep, we did it." So this...
I'm not, I'm not forgetting you, Mary. I'm not forgetting the witness, suggesting how big this actually really is.
Exactly. It is enormous. And, and what they are, are hoping for is enormous, and, you know, we talked at our last administrative leadership meeting about how this and kind of the next finding are going to be the key areas of focus. Most of the others, we update some professional development, we update some policies, we change the handbook, nothing that's going to be as drastic as the next two.
And this is a change in practice.
But what an amazing opportunity.
This is amazing. That's exactly it.
An amazing opportunity.
It sounds like it falls right along with the...
To really think about our whole district, how we all have perceptions, and we all do, and really investigating that.
Exactly. And even the fact, I mean, you know, they, in the toolkit that they provided and showed to Jess and myself and Dr. Marsden, they showed, you know, two different news articles of one day, and how differently it was portrayed. You know, they, it was the same crime, they had both committed the same crime, one was, you know, these college students in their, you know, senior pictures with their ties, and one, and you know, the other was a set of, you know, people that had their actual mug photos that were taken and put up there. One of color, one not of color. It was just a clear message that...
And you can guess which was...
Yes. And it was, it was so clear, and yet, if you were just trying to teach about kind of that crime, or, you know, the use of the news, you may not look at all of the, you wouldn't see, they weren't in the same newspaper, they weren't even, you know, in the same city. So it was something that really kind of was eye-opening, just in the conversations that we were have, having, and the fact that they want you to think about your own discussions and the, you know, what you're leading within your own classroom, to me, is really exciting, because it kind of gives you that freedom and that ability to step back after a lesson and say, you know, "Wow, I didn't even realize that I may have led them in this way, and, and that's why students are feeling the way that they're feeling," or, you know, "They are reporting what they're reporting." And this kind of gives them a feedback tool. So what they provide is a very expansive tool that we'll roll out, involving a lot of different questionnaires and everything, but in the end, we will have a checklist that is very thorough. They provided multiple examples, and we'll kind of pump together on our own checklist that people will complete for any kind of thing that they are bringing within their classroom, and ideally within that for discussions. And one of the other things is, that is exciting and terrifying all at the same time, is that for CPR corrective action, you have a year from the date that the report was released. So the report was released in September 29th. We have till September 29th of 2019 to kind of implement all of these changes, which, as I said, terrifying and exciting all at the same time. But I think, you know, this is really a huge opportunity for the district to not only better the curriculum, but also to, to have those conversations that I think that people may be a little more hesitant to have now, and that are going to have a lot of permission and ability to do so in a very comprehensive and cohesive way. Everyone's going to be asking the same questions, which, to me, is exciting.
What a great opportunity for our kids, to see us having to investigate...
Exactly.
...what we believe as well, and where, where that came from.
And that's my hope, is that this will be able to be modeled, you know, for students to be able to see as well. Because as you said, you know, to see it from your teacher's point of view, and to see that everyone is, is really looking into your own thinking, because everyone's guilty of it, and no one, you know, has the luxury of being required to, to look back at your day and to think about it, and to kind of adjust your own practices and thoughts and, and messages as a result.
This is amazing. But is this going to be done on the teacher level, the department level? Because I'm just thinking, how do you manage this?
That's what we were having conversations about. So we, so it's, it's really something like, for instance, if you have someone who uses a lot of websites in their class...
Right.
...or a lot of articles in their class, it can be an overwhelming task to do that.
Like a history teacher.
Right, right. You know, so I think we're gonna, we're gonna look at it at the building level, and then work with the department chairs as well to do that, but it's going to be a multi-step. It can't just be, "This is what we're doing now, and that's it," right? It's pretty tough. It, it's, it's a change in practice.
Right.
You know, it's not just filling out a form, or it's just, it's having people just reflect on what they're doing, and making sure it's, it's a balanced approach. So one of the things that they talked to us about, if someone shares something that has a, an obvious bias, they can use that in their classroom, as long as they have a counter to that, that shows the other side of things.
Yeah.
Which, you know, gives some more flexibility to teachers, which is great. It's just the whole management of it, and making sure that everyone's on board and understands why we're doing this.
Right.
And then, you know, the paper trail piece too.
But I think it's an opportunity, along with your curriculum review process, to incorporate that as not an on top of, but you incorporated it into the review process.
Exactly.
And you're also shifting it as a partial of your pedagogical shift, too, right? Because now you're doing a lot more reflective conversation, which I, Medfield does a lot of anyway, but you're now putting that edge in stone as part of expectation for, as part of your curriculum moving forward. So I think it is a great opportunity, and I was chuckling because of the amount of work.
It's a massive task, massive. And, you know, Matthew from the, from the department also was, was almost chuckling. I mean, as he kind of rolled it out and said, you know, "And then there's this, and then there's this, and it's really exciting and everything." But I think they recognize, and they don't expect, that, you know, by September 29th of next year, where every teacher will have analyzed every single thing that they've ever used within their classroom. I think their hope is that, as a district, we will have determined what we're going to be using to kind of look into these biases, and I think they're hoping that we will have thought about how we're rolling this out. And I think that they will have hoped that we have done, you know, the majority of the kind of upper echelon of these, you know, "This is the website we use every day within this." But whether, you know, on a Tuesday, somebody has brought in a website in order to, to read something, maybe not every single thing has been analyzed by then, but I think they're expecting at least a, a plan and a way to, to broach it.
If I could just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So, two classes last year that I took that heavily used articles were Modern World Conflicts and AP Language and Composition. In AP Language, it was a lot of non-fictional analysis, and we read a lot of Atlantic articles. And then, in the New York, or in, sorry, in Modern World Conflicts, we read a lot of articles from CNN and the New York Times. And all three of those sources are generally known to be a little more on the left side of things. My question would be, in those classes, is it that we're going to start refraining from using those sources, or that we're going to be using them like under the, or like with, the teacher will let the students know ahead of time of the possible bias?
We're just going to add Fox News to the curriculum.
I know. That's a great question. I think the, the hope and intention would be not, and what, you know, Matthew spoke very explicitly to, is not to limit what people have already brought into their classroom, but to balance it. So if it is kind of all to one side, we want to make sure that we're bringing in other opinions and other thoughts, so that, you know, as, as a district and as thinkers, we are broadening what we are exposed to, and therefore are more knowledgeable about our ability to kind of understand all areas of thinking as well. But I think their hope is not to limit by any means, or to, to kind of pull things back, but rather to expand thinking so that you get a more holistic and, and broadened version of things.
So add The Economist?
Yes, exactly.
The purpose is not, the purpose is not political bias, it's gender bias, race bias.
Gender, yes, yes.
Orientation bias.
Disability bias, which we don't even often realize, that it's become the last place that you can be biased.
Exactly.
Is, is the line that says "Medfield action" the corrective action that you had submitted today?
That's in a, in a, so it's in a very summary.
How specific. You didn't have to get super specific.
Pretty specific. We have to lay out an, an end date as to exactly when we'll be finishing this. As I said, it's, it needs to be completed by September 29th, but within that, we need to have time where the department can say, "Yes, you have met all aspects of that," or "No, you need to continue." So everything needs to have a much earlier end date than September 29th.
So we'll get that feedback from what we submitted today.
But it goes through a more explicit, exactly what, who would be involved, what steps would be taken. And then they, they lay out, based off of the action steps that we put in, they'll lay out, your first progress report is due January 15th at this time, on the following two steps, and then we'll report back. Very supportive, and again, you know, it doesn't come to September 29th and they say, "Actually, you still haven't met it, so, you know, now we're gonna cite you on this." It really is that by September 29th, together in, in partnership, we will have met these. So in the other enormous task that we will be looking through, the other one that was, that was considered not implemented, previously, what they had felt for a self eval, we could kind of be asking specific questions within the district about our programming, and, and use those guide, those answers to guide future decisions. But what they felt is that we will need a much more comprehensive look at K-12 programming to assure that all students, regardless of any of the kind of protected areas, will have access to all athletics, extracurricular activities, programming, everything that the district has to offer. So again, what they offered within this is a very supportive toolkit, involving a lot of suggested surveys that we can send out to kind of get the pulse on how people are feeling currently, and that involves students, staff, parents, so that we can kind of see where people feel there are gaps within our programming and within the supports in all of these areas. And then also, they kind of suggest doing some equity walks. So as a, as a group, we walk around the buildings and try to see what, what is kind of glaringly obvious, what within programming we're seeing, looking at it in this very particular kind of lens. And then from there, we will kind of do a root cause analysis, that is definitely their, their lingo of the, of the years. So we will complete a root cause analysis as to what we think are the reasons that we have these inequities, and then we'll put an action plan into play, and that action plan will then guide our, our move as the year goes along. And the expectation is that what we set up is just that, a yearly institutional self eval. So this will be completed yearly, and that is what we will need to continue to do in order to continue to evaluate and make sure that we are providing access to all students for all areas of the educational...
So Matthew told us this is a big focus of the department, because what was usually accepted in this category years ago, for the last two or three that I've done, is nothing like this.
No.
This is something they want to kind of revamp, what school districts are doing, and, and have them focus on a real process, and not just a checklist like everyone was, was doing for years and years, so.
Yeah.
Be very clear.
So this isn't a finding that we're not making all those activities available, it's just that we're not, in a systematic enough way, identifying how we're...
Yes. Is, you know, again, an assumption. That's what we, we have felt and thought, but we need to kind of do that, that really more analytical look into things, and make sure that everything that we have and everything that we're doing is available to all students. Thank you. Hold on a second. Sorry. Wait. No. Are we... Do you want me to finish and then go to questions?
Yeah, can we finish this and then questions for sure? Thank you.
Great. So the next area was the English Learner Education, and so the first two were partially implemented. And actually, on this first one, what they, what was uploaded was not the correct information as to what the district is currently using. So what their, their finding was that we are using the WIDA Access Placement Test, the WAPT, for all grade levels, which is only approved for kindergarten. But in kind of going through and looking through what we actually are using, we are using the, the approved screeners for all areas. So we use the pre-PT oral screener for pre-K, we do use the WAPT for kindergarten, and then we use the WIDA screener for grades one through 12. So we are in compliance for this. I did call to kind of see what they wanted to do, and they just suggested that we kind of say that we are in compliance, this is what we're using, this is the, the expectation based off of DESI. And then when the corrective action will be, to rewrite that statement and submit it to them in an uploaded document. So this one is a lot easier in comparison to the others.
ELE is a different person, too, from DESI. So Matthew Nixon is Special Education and Civil Rights, and then E...
Sabil does the ELE programming. So it was a different person that we did not meet with to kind of go through corrective action, but the corrective action is a little bit more intuitive, as you'll see. For the next area, it was in terms of SEI-endorsed teachers, and that all students that are receiving English learner instruction are receiving their core area content from a teacher that is SEI-endorsed. And Medfield has kind of gone through significant measures to get a, a large group of teachers endorsed in this area by holding onsite courses. to get a large group of teachers endorsed in this area by holding onsite courses or in making them available to, I think, upwards of 80 teachers in the past. So there are, it was a very large move to make this available and to make sure that we have trained staff. So the next kind of thing is making sure that we sit down, and I've been talking with some of the administrators, to really make sure that we program the students' core areas with those teachers that have been endorsed. And when it is absolutely impossible, to kind of encourage and make ways for those teachers to go through the endorsement process as well. The final finding, and this was the implementation in progress. This is about the program evaluation for ELE. And in this way, our program is very new. It hasn't been kind of formalized for more than the past two years. So this, because of that, we don't have all of the data that is required to complete the evaluation. But we are aware of it, have had conversations with the state about what is the expectation, where we will put together a team to kind of go through access testing and to kind of look at the MCAS scores in relation to access testing. And again, to develop an action plan to improve the programming as a result of that. But in order to do that, they do ask that you have three to five years' worth of data, which we did not have at the time. So we continue to, you know, know that this is something that we will be doing. And I've been in conversation with both of the teachers within the district to set aside times where we can start to look through the data and analyze what we're seeing and trying to improve accordingly. So as I said, corrective action was submitted today, this afternoon. And the state, again, it's a window of two to four weeks in which they will respond saying that we need to be a little more explicit in our corrective action or laying out the progress report dates and expectations. And again, those kind of change as we go along as well. So they'll list out exactly what the full year's worth of plans will be. But if they, if we submit one progress and it kind of seems to be going the wrong way or seems to be, you know, have achieved a lot faster than expected, they amend the progress report expectations themselves. Any questions?
Do we have any comments, questions?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Katie Melbach. It was a couple slides ago, but I was wondering.
Number 15?
Yeah. Making the programs available to all different types of people, regardless of all these protected status. I wonder, are you taking into consideration socioeconomic diversity?
Yes. So one of the things that they recommended that we also do is kind of looking through the available data that we have through the district profiles that are completed by DESI as well, which will go through a lot of the socioeconomic status as well as, you know, the variety of different areas. What is hard in that is that they talk a lot about the economics, they'll talk about special education, they'll talk about things in that area, but they won't be able to touch on a lot of the gender equality issues. They won't be able to touch on kind of the sexuality, things like that won't be within that profile. So that was why they recommended kind of taking the data that is primarily available already and then sending out surveys. But, great question, because I did not reference that use. Thank you.
Thank you.
For giving me that little prompt.
Any other comments?
And thank you for waiting, Katie, sorry.
Yeah. Any others, questions?
I just want to say, you know, I've seen a number of these coordinated program reviews, and they used to be much more of an audit. And I know in the past, I remember sitting in the television studio when Bob Maguire was superintendent. We had to invest, we had to invest in a lot of systems because we had IEPs that weren't aligned and they weren't getting signed and things like that. So I think it's a great sign that, you know, what we have here is obviously work to be done, but it's all sort of high-end policy kind of work that, and a lot of it sounds like responds to innovations that have happened since the last CPR.
It is, yes, which is exciting, you know. And it's great to kind of see the ways that the department is also changing and evolving, given, you know, different climates and times as well, and really supporting us with that.
I would also be disappointed that if a review that lasted a year, took this much effort, this much time, and this many people's input, didn't come back with something really robust for us to be able to grow towards.
I agree. And I, you know, as I said, for me, it couldn't have come at a better time because, you know, I'm really hoping that between the entry plan and a lot of the conversations and interviews that I'm having and being able to code those themes as well as this, that we'll have really a clear focus of where the Department of Student Services is moving within the district as well.
Just want to thank Mary. She's done a lot of work on this.
Absolutely, thank you.
She came right in, you know, July 1st and really got to work on this. Been great with it.
That's where the coffee machine is.
That's great. Well, thank you.
Super, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Alrighty, and we've got the MASC conference coming up.
We do. So we put that on the agenda last year and before, just as a FYI that, I know you mentioned it last time in your comments, but folks will be going to that this week.
This week?
Yep.
It was very informative last year. Looking forward to it.
So the end of the year report?
Michael?
Please?
So we submitted the end of year report back in September, I think it was September 20th, which is a requirement that we need to do every year. It's about a hundred-page document. It has, let me see, Schedule 1, Schedule 3, Schedule 4, Schedule 7, Schedule 18, which is a new schedule, which we have to now report all Unit A contracts. And through that Schedule 18, they look at the last three years of the contract and then they compare it to other districts across the Commonwealth. And then Schedule 19, which is, I gave you a copy of Schedule 19 because that's the summary of the report. Within Schedule 19, that's where the town and school costs are combined. Part of the Schedule 19, which is probably the most important part of this schedule, report, I should say, that's where the school committee costs are allocated. The general administrative services from the town side that are allocated as part of the school budget. Legal services, district-wide management and technology is reported in there. We have pupil services, transportation, school security, operations and maintenance, employee retirement contribution, insurance for active employees, insurance for retired employees, other non-employee insurance, rental leases, short-term interest, fixed cost, non-public school or community service, that's where all our donations are reported from different nonprofit organizations that make donations to the Medfield Public Schools. Capital expense, long-term debt, short-term debt, and then any other payments that are made to other districts. So Schedule 19 is a combination of the school budget plus all those costs that are then combined to look at the true cost of the school department. When you have that schedule in front of you right now, the.
Question about 235?
Which line?
Line 235.
The next page.
School choice and charter.
Yep, go ahead.
So we, it looks like in FY '17, there was a big jump in that. Does that include tuition for out-of-district placements? Or is that, do we just have more kids going to charter schools?
The school, we had, so it fluctuates. And I think last, I think in fiscal year 18, to tell you the truth, we have zero kids going to charter schools. In the year prior, I think it was four students that were going to charter schools. So that's reported on this report.
Yeah, typically, the parents might work near one and they bring them there.
Yeah. So the jump in FY '17, that's an expenditure out, but that's come back down.
It went back down, correct. Correct. So the important part is if you go to that last page, it shows you what the average teacher salary is for fiscal year '16 through fiscal year '18. And you can see that in fiscal year '18, the average teacher salary in Medfield was $81,695. And in fiscal year '18, that jumped to $88,020. And so all this is calculated through this report. We go through an audit, so the report actually goes through a full audit in, I'd like to say sometime in December. And then that's reported back to us probably about four weeks after. But, and then again, there's also the maintenance of effort, which Medfield is right now at 105%. And there's two, there's the Title I part and then the IDEA. So we meet both of those qualifications. Any other questions?
Michael, did you happen to bring the agreement?
I do have the agreement.
Want to just talk about the agreement?
So in 2005, the agreement between the school committee and the town was, I believe, agreed upon. It has to be done every few years. This is what determines what costs are allocated from the town side to the school department. So such as any functions, any accounting functions, there's a percentage that is agreed upon that has to be charged back to the school department. DPW snow removal gets backcharged to the school department. So any indirect cost that the town has has to be agreed upon by the school committee and the selectmen that can be charged back to the school department. And that's what drives, that's what drives the cost off.
All the, you know, water for our fields and.
No, that's automatically charged.
Okay.
So we're talking about indirect costs, like I said. Accounting services.
Okay, thank you.
DPW services, anything that's above and beyond that is agreed upon. Your fixed cost.
And that's done on a percentage basis, right?
And that's done, it's done, no, it's done according to per pupil. So they take our per pupil, and then from there, they determine how many students that we have. And there's a formula that goes into it. Any other questions?
How does the maintenance of effort budget relate to net school spending?
So, so a few years, was it about, Jeff, 10 years ago that there, when there was a recession, a lot of schools, it has to do with how much the state has to provide, the minimum amount that the state has to provide to communities so that they meet that qualification. And a few years ago, when the economy went down and the funding sources went down, towns weren't spending their minimum contributions that was required by state, which made it more difficult. I believe in the last couple of years, there's only a few towns that still don't meet that minimum qualification.
So this is for kids with disabilities or Title I, they want, the state wants to make sure that.
It's all, there's also a general ad kit. That town has an obligation to provide a certain amount of funding for education.
So that's why when the two regional school districts we pay into in this town, you never see them at the warrant committee, never see, so the formula says that the town minimum contribution for Tri-County is this, and for Norfolk County Aggie is this, and the town just pays them. They don't do more or less, or, although Norfolk Aggie tries to get more.
I was going to say, they charge tuition that's higher than the minimum contribution.
They sure do.
They do, and then there's a clause that they also can charge up to $10,000 per student on top of the tuition.
Which is what they do, and we send it back to the town, and the town covers that.
Okay.
So when they, if we're spending $14,000 a student, Tri-County's spending $18,000, $19,000, $20,000 a student, and Norfolk Aggie's even more.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Oh, yes, can I ask, please, thank you. I'm just curious, the packet that you have in front of you here, and is that public information?
Sure.
So is that going to be accessible on the website? I don't know what you're.
If you go to the DESI website, it goes all the way back to 2005, it's on the end of the report.
So I'm not getting any 2018 per pupil expenditure?
Because they have.
But is it in that packet?
Based on this packet.
Correct. So it was submitted to the Department of Education on September 20, I believe it was, and it still has to go through the audit process. Once the audit process is done, the state releases the reports.
So everything that's in that packet is available at DESI?
So what the school committee just received was just the summary of Schedule 19.
So that's not accessible?
That will be accessible.
It will be once they audit it.
It's all accessible once the state releases it.
When did that happen?
After they audit it.
Which is?
Around December.
The state.
Is there a reason why we can't see it, like in a presentation here while you're speaking about it?
But it doesn't, but we, but it doesn't, the state uses these numbers to, if you're looking for the per pupil expenditure, the state uses these numbers to calculate that. That's not on this document, but there's no reason you can't.
No, it's just to sort of be on those pages. Because it feels like it's a presentation to you, but.
It is a presentation to the school, correct.
But it is public information. Okay. Alright, thank you. Yes?
Sure, I, so, just to follow up on Marty. So three times I've come in front of the school committee and asked that attachments that are part of the presentations be attached to the minutes. June 5th, Dr. Martin's in the Detention Committee, said that they would be attached. And the minutes are great and the information, you know, Mike did a phenomenal job at the first meeting, going over the capital expenditures, and it was great information. It would be great if those were attached to the minutes, because there is, like, today's presentations are great, you know, and really are an integral part of the minutes. And they're referenced in the minutes, but they aren't actually attached to the minutes. So is that something that you could ask that, on a regular basis, anything that's presented, be attached to the minutes?
They're listed.
They're listed, but the actual documents are in. And then the June 5th meeting, Dr. Martin.
Did I say?
Yeah, that was the June 5th meeting.
You're not required to, so that's something you guys tell me what to do. I mean, it's not a requirement, we meet the requirement by listing most of the time. But I think that if it's something that you want to do, then you should talk about it.
Why don't we put it on the.
Put it on the agenda, talk about it, and.
Okay, we can put it on the next agenda.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Alrighty, any other items since posting on November 1st?
No, I just have things that I share at the information items. We got an email from MSBA today that I want to share, and just an update on Title I, that came in as well. But I'll talk about it then, it's informational.
Okay.
Alright.
Now we're going to old business, the Dale Street Project School Committee Presentation to Building Committee.
So at our last meeting, we discussed that this would be an agenda item because Tim was listed as the school committee representative. So I had asked that if we could discuss that at this meeting and then hopefully make a decision, because we have to let MSBA know it's another change to the school building committee. So if you guys could do that and decide who the new rep would be, then we can let MSBA know and go forward.
I think Leo has experience with buildings. I think you're campaign, eight schools or something, eight schools?
Actually, 10 now, as of last summer, yes.
Okay, alrighty. So to me, you seem like the likely candidate.
I would love to be a part of that project. Some people find it very annoying, I find it very exciting.
Awesome. We'll find our niche.
So moved.
It's a lot of meetings.
I have three trials in the spring, there's no way.
Wonderful, thank you, Leo.
Thanks, Leo.
Thank you, much pleasure.
So we'll let MSBA know tomorrow, Michael?
Yeah, 20 days from the vote.
Right.
I apologize for what they say as a result.
Super.
Because that can hurt our chances.
It looks like we don't have any donations.
We don't.
So the superintendents report to the committee, please.
Okay, so our first item would be the MCAS presentation. Then we'll talk a little bit about those NASDAQ enrollment numbers that were in your packets. about those NASDAQ enrollment numbers that were in your packets and then the communication app development update and then I have those informational items as well. So as you know, we got our MCAS results, they were released right near the end of October. So what I've done every year, so I've been here is go through this and have a conversation about, you know, what's going on in terms of the results and then, you know, what are we doing as a school district to address that? I think this is, you know, the important piece to remember in this particular presentation is that this is the second year of the Next Generation MCAS. So the Next Generation MCAS originally called MCAS two point oh, grades three point eight, designed to be computer-based. So the district, the state wanted all the districts to be computer-ready by the end of next year. We had all of our kids last year taken on a computer. So it was the first time our third graders did it on a computer-based test, thought they did a really nice job with that, but there's a learning curve there. First time those kids have to do the typing to the answers, open response, that kind of thing. Certainly, we've talked about this last year, that there are definitely higher standards in the Next Generation versus the Legacy MCAS. We're still doing some Legacy MCAS, so five, eight, and ten science, ten English and math. And then this year, Medfield High School is gonna pilot the computer-based, actually, they did computer-based last year pilot and then we doing a pilot on biology this year. So legacy is still paper and pencil, but we're moving to almost all computer-based with our MCAS testing. So in terms of Next Generation, definitely an updated version of the twenty-year-old assessment that we knew as MCAS focuses on students' critical thinking abilities, application of knowledge, and ability to make those connections between reading and writing, which is a real important piece to that test. Clearer signal of readiness for the next grade or college or career, designed to give, to be given on the computer. And then I said that some districts are completely paper still. They're, they're trying to get into the computer piece, but, you know, we've been fortunate enough to have support with Chromebooks. Chromebooks work really, really well with these exams, so we've, we've had a good experience with that. These are, again, first given in two thousand and seventeen and they'll all replace the legacy. And here's an important piece that, you know, we've had a lot of meetings, we've had webinars with the department. They, they told us to be cautious about comparing seventeen and eighteen Next Generation. With that said, my presentation will compare those. Even though we're being cautious about it, I mean, we need to kind of look at, at apples to apples in terms of the same test, even though there is some differences in the exam. I feel like if they were that cautious about it, they wouldn't have calculated the student growth data and they did. They calculated student growth for seventeen and eighteen, which I think is a huge indicator of where, where the kids are in terms of their learning. And you remember that student growth calculation is based on, every kid's score is placed in a bucket and then that next year, they're placed in a new bucket and compared to what they scored the last year and that's how they calculate the, the growth. Fifty is being dead even in terms of growth. Above that is above average, below that is below, but they say the range you want to be is forty to sixty on student growth. That's what the department recommends. So the levels are a little bit different on those achievement levels. You remember the old MCAS was advanced, proficient, needs improvement and warning. Next Generation is exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, and then not meeting expectations. So you'll see that as we go through, I'm not gonna go through all those explanations, but as we go through the, the presentation, you'll see the new ones. So if you remember, the last year we did MCAS, the Legacy MCAS, We洛克had finally hit ninety. Ninety percent of our kids were advanced or proficient. And I know that that was something that they were very proud of and should have been. That's, that's a pretty good accomplishment for, for grade three to be at ninety percent. But taking a look at the Next Generation, you'll see that sixty-seven percent of We洛克 students scored exceeding or meeting expectations. Again, you can't do that comparison, but as educators, we still do. We see those numbers and we want to make that comparison of advanced and proficient's just different. It's not the same. And you know, from my presentations, last year was the first time ever I put the state up there, because I feel like we shouldn't even be compared to the state, because we should be well above that. But with this Next Generation and these new tests, they are included in there just to give us a baseline and see where we are. So a sixty-seven percent of our kids were exceeding or meeting expectations, fifty-two percent of mass were in the same, in the same level. You'll see pretty consistent with exceeding expectations with twelve percent and eleven percent. Again, consistent with the meeting expectations with fifty-four and fifty-six. So a little bit of growth there. Not, you know, we're certainly not crazy about the partially meeting at thirty percent, looking at thirty of kids there, but that's something that we're working on, no doubt. You know, one of the focus we've had the last few years is really been working with our elementary teachers on mathematics instruction. We've had consultant work with our teachers and doing both direct instruction with our teachers, but also observation and then doing some, some direct instruction of content with our teachers. And that's been ongoing with seven or eight different meetings during the year. So we're really starting to see the benefit of that, where our scores are going up, but our teachers feel more comfortable with, with the mathematics instruction and certainly our kids are, are learning more. So if you look at where we are with that, eleven percent, fifty-six percent, with sixty-seven percent of We洛克kids scoring exceeding or meeting expectations, where only fifty percent of Massachusetts is there. So again, a work in progress and not the numbers that we were seeing with, with the original Legacy MCAS, but certainly some improvement there with our third grade ELA in math. So looking at fourth grade, you remember that Dale Street was recognized as a commendation school two years ago for improvement in MCAS scores. We went to the State House and staff and Steve Brenham and I got a, had a nice presentation, nice award for being a commendation school for improvement. You see here that with ELA in mathematics, exceeding expectations, seventy-two percent are either exceeding or meeting expectations in language arts, with only fifty-three percent of the state there. With mathematics, seventy percent of Dale Street and only forty-eight percent of the state. And I think, you know, you look at those mathematics scores in Dale Street, again, speaking to the professional development and the effort that our teachers have been doing with that, they've really done a nice job with that. Grade five, again, some, you'll see some, some numbers there with seventy-nine percent of Dale Street students scored exceeding or meeting expectations. That's our highest percentage in elementary right now with, with the grade five ELA, with only fifty-four percent of Massachusetts scoring at that level. And then at mathematics, seventy-three percent Dale Street and then forty-six percent of the state. So again, our, our students and our teachers doing a great job in that mathematics and it's really starting to show in that, in that area. So here's an area that we're concerned about and I think we've, we started addressing that the last couple of years and we're concerned about it at grade five and at grade eight is our science, technology, engineering scores, just not where they need to be. We look at, we're advanced, again, we're going back to legacy on this test, advanced at twenty-one percent and proficient at forty-three percent. We should be well above that. Having thirty-four percent of our kids that needs improvement in, in grade five science isn't really acceptable and we know that. That's why we focused on the, on the FOST learning kits the last couple of years to get some of that professional development in, in materials for our teachers in science and we hope to see some improvement there. But again, we're not seeing in eighth grade too. You'll see when we get to eighth grade, they're not where they need to be. Again, above the state, but, but not where they need to be in terms of Medfield standards. So one of the things that's been a trend statewide is that middle schools have not performed as well and actually this year, statewide, middle schools did not do well at all in, in terms of, of the new, new generation MCAS. So seventy-one percent of our Blake students in grade six exceeded or met expectations and only fifty-one percent of the state level. Still not crazy about partially meeting at twenty-four and twenty-seven the last couple of years in ELA. We, we need to see better numbers than that and better scores. Again, it's a snapshot. We're not sitting there having our kids take practice tests. We're not doing that. We're, we're following our curriculum, we're having kids do project-based learning, innovation, using technology. That's what we want our kids to do. However, this snapshot is one that unfortunately is the one that's used for all of our judgment with accountability in, in the state and federal government. I think I told some of you before in a meeting with the, the new commissioner about a month ago, I asked him if we were looking at getting away from all these tests in MCAS and, and starting to pare this down, because if you're a middle school in Massachusetts, you're doing a lot of testing in the springtime, a lot of testing. So, you know, I asked if they were, if they would consider looking at the old model, which was four, eight, and ten, or at least three, four, eight, and ten, and go back to that model. He's certainly open to it. He has two issues that he has to contend. One is his board, because I think that the Board of Education is still very test-heavy and loves, loves this stuff. And the other piece is you need to get a waiver from the federal government, because the federal government is requiring all these different data points with testing. New Hampshire just got a waiver, so they don't have to test as much. So I suggested, is that something that we could do? And he smiled and said, not in my first year. So I think, you know, everyone, you know, he's got priorities and he's got a lot of them and he has to deal with, but that's something that certainly I know the MTA is, is working on and, and all of us are. I mean, we're all in this together and we're kind of done with all this testing. You know, it's important. It's important in terms of getting a baseline, getting numbers, getting data. We, we use this information, but it's a lot. It's a lot on our kids and it's a lot of time out of teaching and learning for the testing. If you look at the math, seventy percent of our kids exceeding or meeting expectations with only forty-seven percent in the state in grade six. Again, we're not loving a quarter of our kids at partially meeting at that, at that area. So looking at grade seven, only sixty-five percent of our kids scored and exceeding or meeting expectations with forty-six percent of the state in that area. Again, looking at a third of our kids at partially meeting. And then the same with seventy-five percent of our students in mathematics exceeding or meeting and only forty-six percent. You can see those numbers statewide are really low, all below fifty percent in those areas. And then eighth, eighth grade, fifty-nine percent meeting or exceeding expectations in, and again, they round up, so it's seven and fifty-three, but they, they round up or round down depending, with fifty-one percent of Massachusetts. So if you notice the other ones, we go back, you know, we're way above twenty points on everything. You get to the eighth grade one here, you know, we're pretty close to the state on that. So we're, we're looking at that. We've, Nat and I have met with Gail Duffy and certainly looking at some of the curriculum and making sure that we're aligned where we need to be there. And the same thing when we get to the, the eighth grade science as well. And then seventy-three percent of our students exceeding or meeting expectations with only fifty percent of that happening at the state level. So this is a real concern that we have here. So only thirty-six percent of Blake students were proficient or advanced in science and technology, right on with the state. So, you know, having only one percent of our kids advanced and fifty-six percent of our kids needs improvement. Again, above the state, but nowhere where we should be in terms of our kids and our student achievement in Medfield. So that's something that we touch base with Orla and, you know, she's looking at it to make sure that we have some alignment there and to have conversations with, with the staff and getting that where it needs to be. Again, it's not the end-all, be-all, but that's not where our kids should be scoring in science and technology eighth grade. So this was something that the state had recommended the last two years that we include in our presentations, because, you know, they, they feel like they were getting a lot of pushback from the local level and the state level on this. Essentially, why did my kids score proficient on the older MCAS, but now they're not there at the new one? And talking about the new standards and more rigorous, that, you know, that this is looking at the signal of students readiness, look closely at your child's score and make sure, you know, where they fall. And that was always a conversation in the old MCAS as well, like lots of times when you were high, needs improvement, you may have been one, one question or two questions away from being proficient. So when you kind of look a little deeper at some of this, we're talking about kids that may be one or two questions off versus someone that may be on the lower end, which are one or two questions off into the warning. So, you know, it's, you look at the details of this and you see and you want to make sure that it isn't something where it's one or two points or one or two questions. And then that, you know, looking at the, the baseline scores for eighteen and they shouldn't be compared to the previous. And that's something that you just can't, you can't compare the, the Next Generation to the, to the Legacy, you just can't. It's not, it's, it's not a clear comparison and we try to do it because there are four levels on the Legacy and there are four levels in the Next Generation, but it just doesn't work. It's not statistically significant, accurate to do that. So grade ten, again, you've, you've heard Mike Spiel now for years on the grade ten piece, feel like our kids should be hitting this out of the park every year. When you look at the data from years and years ago, before it became a competency determination for graduation, the scores statewide were nothing like they are now. Once that came into play, the scores went through the roof and our, our scores are no different. So looking at ELL in grade ten, seventy-three percent of our kids advanced, only fifty-one percent of the state, twenty-one percent proficient, two percent needs improvement, one percent warning. Having advanced proficient numbers of ninety-seven percent, and when you're looking at a state number of ninety-one percent, you know that it's not a true grade ten test, but it is, that's what our kids have to take. Mathematics, seventy-nine percent as opposed to fifty-one, seventeen, three, and four. Advanced proficient number of ninety-six percent in the state number at seventy-eight percent. Advanced proficient numbers in our grade ten science, which is actually a biology test. So it's right after they take that course, ninety-four percent of our kids are advanced proficient with seventy-four at the state level.
So do we give that in grade nine then?
Yes. So the thing is, is that you, you could, you could take a step back and say, well, it all ends up great, right, at grade ten, because you have that number, but it's, the science, technology, and engineering in four and eight has a much broader curriculum base that it's testing on versus this was just strictly a biology test. So I think that's something that, you know, we need to keep in mind that just because the grade ten comes out like that, doesn't mean that we need to neglect the four and eight in, in looking at the curriculum of the younger ages.
Jeff, which grades took it on computer last year?
All elementary and one cohort of grade ten. Did math.
And remind me, which ones are the measured progress and which ones are the, are they all on the measured progress now?
Yeah. So, but the paper pencil was, the legacy was still paper and pencil.
Right, okay.
So all the Next Generation ones were all computer.
This was their first time taking it on, on computer?
It is.
So I, a little caveat there, when we did the side-by-side in one of my previous districts, there was a fifteen-point swing between the computer and the written.
Mm-hmm.
And we did four, we had four middle schools, we had two on one and two on the other.
Right.
So, and that was for math, both math and ELA, it was fifteen-point swing on, you know, because of the, how the test was administered.
Right.
So.
Especially for the little ones. I mean, I think that was a big thing for the third graders.
Right, yeah.
You know, it was, it was tough for them. But, you know, we were required to do it this year, so we wanted to get ahead of it and get those kids right into it. We had the technology available.
Yeah.
You know, our teachers did some work, work with typing skills and all that to kind of get them ready for that, cause they needed to do that. It's not teach you to the test, but you had to have that skill set to even take the test.
Right.
So I think they did fairly well, given it was the first time.
I'm not recommending not doing it, but, cause the, prepping them, getting them used to it, obviously.
Right.
It's a recommendation.
Right.
Also, this is not a snap, this is just a small sliver of our student population. So this is no measurement of the caliber of Medfield, so.
Right. So, you know, looking at this data, we always have the item analysis, we take, have the conversations with, you know, teachers and staff, you know, what are, what are our strengths? What can we do better? Always going through that. We're trying to identify trends, which is what we're really trying to do at those key levels that we're not happy with in terms of four and eight. And then looking at some of the middle school is like, what do we need to do in terms of adjustment of curriculum? And then at the elementary level, definitely, I'm not sure at the middle school level yet. Elementary level, teachers receive their, their classroom data, so they get to see how their kids did last year and get a sense of, you know, where they're at. You know, I think at the secondary level, it's really looking at some of the common assessments, making sure that the departments are working with, with the teachers on that and looking at the data. And then they become part of our department goals, like some of the, some of the grade levels are using these as department goals as part of teacher evaluation. Whether it's a curriculum adjustment or something that they need to do differently, they, they do that as part of their goal. So that's something that, you know, that data is important to look at, but it's, again, it's not the end-all, be-all, but it, it does give us a sense of, you know, what we're doing well and what areas we can improve on. Any questions?
Jeff, does this presentation get sent out to the parents? It will be, it would be.
Yeah, I linked it to my blog last year, I think.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I linked it to that.
Okay, no, but I think the commentary, I suppose if we could link out this, this, this meeting.
Yeah.
Because some of the feedback I got, because I have a current ninth grader, you know, were the stats on the grade eight science and for, for some parents, it was alarming and.
For some superintendents, it was alarming?
It should be alarming.
I was going to say, you know, I scheduled a meeting with that and all about a couple of years ago and then circumstances got in the way and I never made it. I reached out to them, scheduled a meeting, and I let it drop. But I do think we need to, you know, when, on the last superintendent, we focused a lot on the high school, developing the high school curriculum. And when we hired you, we had done, you know, the community was telling us we had been ignoring the elementary school curriculums, curricula. But I think we need to, especially at the science, need to put some investment in at the middle school level. And by that, I expand that back down to Dale as well. I think we're just, we're consistently hearing from these tests from you, from our teachers, from our own experience as parents, that that science curriculum was not rigorous. I mean, I remember when my kids went through Dale Street, the science curriculum was barely there. And we've come a long way since then.
A long way.
Steve's done a lot over there to implement, to put a lot of structure on what goes on at Dale Street. But I, and there's a lot of structure that goes on at the middle school. And, you know, I think what we do at the middle school is great, but for whatever reason, we're not, I think, getting through on science. And I know the MCAST is not the only measure of whether we are, but it's the, you know, it's the one by which we can compare ourselves to every other district. And whether it's that we're not using the, you know, aligned properly and aligned with the frameworks or that there's some disconnect in professional development. But I think as we get into the budget, I'd like to explore some things that we might do.
So, so one of the things that I would say is that we've done a really good job, I think, the last three years at the elementary level, working with teachers, giving them the right curriculum that they need, giving them additional time in the day to actually get this stuff done. Because when your day was packed, it's math or doing science or social studies, you're going to choose math and reading at the elementary, you're just going to. I think we've really done well with that. One of the things that we're doing at Dale Street this year is we have a science person come in and work with our teachers and do ongoing professional development with them around the, around the science kits. We're just piloting that to see how that works. It's the same model we use for mathematics. We'd like to use that same model for science. So we're doing it at Dale Street this year, going to assess that and hopefully, you know, if it works, bring it down to the other, other two schools as well. It's just, it takes time, you know, it takes time for that. It just, it's, if it hasn't been a core part of your curriculum for a long time, and just because we buy kits for you doesn't mean it's going to work automatically. I mean, there's PD involved, there's time. I think they're, they're working hard at it and it's just different than what they've been doing.
And the kits we've been buying are targeted at the elementary level.
Right.
Kits aren't, aren't the answer at the middle school, right?
No, but I think we got to get a, they got to get a strong base before they get to the middle school level, which they haven't had. They just haven't had it.
And one of the things that we really wanted to pursue when we were talking about the increase that we asked for and that the town gave us last year, was that we really wanted to pursue a more robust science curriculum. And that, one of my personal feelings as we were looking at that budget is that this is not something we could let go for another year. We needed to have those, those kits and the expanded curriculum so that we could be building on science. And it's not one of those things that just happens, as you've been saying.
We need the time too.
To be able to have that, to be able to get to the professional development.
You know, I think the teachers have really dug in, they worked over the summer to do some of this, to get acclimated to some of the science, but they need time to work together, to talk about lessons, to say, "This worked, this didn't work, how about if we do this next time?" All these kinds of important professional conversations have to take place and those take time. It just doesn't happen in a year or two. And I know that's frustrating because you only get one shot at second grade and one shot at third grade, but it does take time for that to happen.
I guess I'd still like to see some coordinated plan. I know this isn't what you're saying, but it sort of sounds like what we're saying is, "Well, the middle school can't improve until we, bless you, until we improve it."
Oh, I'm not saying that at all.
At the elementary school. I think we need some kind of coordinated plan for improving science education at the middle school.
Gotcha, okay.
Where there's putting more, you know, more of the, you know, technology and engineering piece in that maybe we're not doing it. I can't even really remember.
Make our space, and we're doing a lot of that. Yeah, we're doing a lot of that work. And I hear you, I hear you.
I think you have, I'm going to echo what Mary said before. I think you have an unprecedented opportunity because where you're, you're requesting a director of teaching and learning or superintendent of teaching and learning, you have an opportunity where you're doing a comprehensive curriculum review process or implementing one, which hasn't existed here. And a cry out from the community to get access to support the learning at home. I think you have a perfect triangle to implement some key pieces in place in a process that won't happen overnight, but you can put pieces in place where your benchmark, your benchmark scores from across the district will prepare you for what your MCAST scores are going to look like. So, and that's, comes from, you know, you know, an organized system where you're not controlling what happens day-to-day, but your, your district-wide benchmark tests that everyone is equal to are going to give you an idea of how the curriculum's going long before you. This shouldn't be a shocker to any school district.
Right.
If we're tracking data appropriately.
So I would say that we do a really good job of that, language arts and mathematics. We don't do a great job of that in science. I mean, it shows. I mean, I think our teachers at the elementary level have done a really good job using data with, with language arts and mathematics. They haven't really been asked to do it with, with science. I mean, this is fairly new to them. So I think that's, you know, it's a work in progress with that.
I was just going to add.
Sure.
I know that you referenced that you had an outside person come in to help with the math. And I remember distinctively, it was my first year in Medfield, that it was, Wheelock was, in the legacy MCAST, they'd been flagged. Do they do that now in the new, if you don't get a certain percentage, like the science per se, we have 36 people?
Oh, like an accountability piece?
Right. Is that what's driving you to get the science?
No, 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 no.
Initiative?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think so. You know, so there's always that accountability in math and language arts.
But not for science?
No. And I think that, you know, they would, you know, they disaggregate this data so that the subgroups happen, you know? So we have just student with disabilities, they have different ethnic groups, they break everything all down. And, you know, I think that's one of the issues that we had at Wheelock was we weren't making the progress that they said we need to make. Because to the Department of Ed, learning is linear, even though we all know it's not. But it goes, supposed to go like this in their mind. And when it doesn't go exactly the way they have it planned, then you get on the naughty list. But there's no naughty list now, they've been pretty good about that. They've, you know, they've relaxed that a little bit. In fact, they're not putting any schools on, you know, level four or five or whatever anymore, this year anyway. But I think, you know, it's, the impetus is make sure that our kids learn and learn well and can carry that, that learning over to the next grade level. And I just think that our kids have to do better in science. They just, they just need to.
Agreed.
You know? Anyone else? I know I always present to them because it is a, it's a business meeting that's public, so I try to.
Yeah.
Well, I have two quick questions regarding the third grade MCAST that took it last year and now they're fourth graders.
Sure.
This is stand-up, say your name.
Melissa Roder. So I'm just, so I got my daughters, I'm not worried. She's, I mean, she didn't meet the expectation, but she was like, she was right there.
Yep.
So do I just like, I know she's getting help with math where she needed to get it, but do I just throw it aside and wait till her fourth grade? Be concerned as a parent that she wasn't meeting the math expectations?
I mean, I think anytime you're concerned, you contact a teacher or a building principal and have a conversation about it. I mean, I never wait for any, I wouldn't recommend you wait for anything if you're ever concerned about it.
Definitely, she'd say, "Help." Then my husband's like, "Well, we're the happiest on this stuff." And I'm like, "Can't measure happiness."
So I would say that.
And like, yeah, and she'd yell in front of her room, "I'm really happy!" I know that.
Which is important. But I would say if you have seen other indications that there's, she's struggling in math other than just that test, then certainly have a conversation. But if it's just that test, you know, make a decision, whatever you think is best. But I think anytime if any, you know, any concern, always pick up the phone or stop by, you know? But that's, again, it's one measurement. So if it's a consistent, if there's concerns in mathematics that are now consistent and now surfaces with a test.
Okay.
Then you want to have that conversation. But if it's just a test?
It's one snapshot in time.
It is.
That's it.
It is. Could have been the breakfast, Melissa.
The happiness, I was like, you can't measure the happiness. But even though these, some of these kids may be meeting above expectation, how happy are those kids like? I don't know. Like, anxiety, anxiety.
Well, yeah, you're speaking to the complexity of every child. How every child takes a test, how every child experiences the MCAST. What this really is though, is a snapshot in so many ways. I mean, because you do aggregate it, we do get to get some sort of picture around what we really need to help focus on more, so.
This is, again, a snapshot to the, of just one snapshot in time. One of the shirk comings of it is that it's a whole year later, we get the results, now we get to act on it, right?
Which then begs the question of why it's then used as a placement for the kids in the middle school.
Well, it's interesting. So one of the things that the commissioner said to us last month is that he is thinking about doing or having a conversation with the board about doing MCAST in the fall. So that got everyone, especially the urban folks, concerned about, you know, summer loss and those kinds of issues that, that they may have. And I think that's, you know, I'll have to see. Other states do do that. So that way, you get, you get it back and you can use it, right? With those same kids, as opposed to getting it back and the kids are gone.
At the end of sixth grade, they were using a fifth grade test to place seventh grade math. It just seemed like a really big snapshot, you know? But I mean, there were other criteria, but still, I think that one isn't valid. And that's just my opinion.
I think they should just up the processing time and get it back to us in the spring.
Yeah. Yeah, they could do it.
Let's, let's just do that.
It's on a computer.
Which I think they're going to try to do with, with the computer now. That's what they're trying to do. That's what they're going to try to do with the computer.
I calculate my taxes real fast, I can tell you. So we get the MCAST going.
I know. No kidding. Any other questions?
Uh, this is, sorry, probably a person, like, probably saying I'm biased because I have a science type though. But, you know, one of the things which, I have two daughters, one in ninth grade, one coming up through the middle school, and they're just a massive jump from the middle school and now what my daughter's experiencing at the high school. And the one thing I've heard from both of them is that there's a lot of redo from year to year to year. So it's good to hear that you're thinking about bringing someone into the science curriculum because I think there's a lot, there's a lot of potential that's just not being, you know, tacked in that area. It was interesting to see those numbers overall. But again, I think there's just, there's not a lot of emphasis just in country, as a country, on those areas. I think there really been, and have been for years, left behind. So it's good to hear that, you know, there've been, hopefully there'll be some action, you know, taken with, you know, the override and all that with those parts.
So when you say big jump, are you talking about workload, homework, those kinds of things or?
Yeah, intensity.
Intensity, okay.
You know, the general demand and what's expected. And I think that can happen earlier than we, you know, until they get to the high school. And again, I always, I always kind of wondered when it happened. I would look at what, you know, what they were doing in each of the different disciplines and I was going, "Okay, when does science kick in? When does, you know, when, when does it really, you know, start to, you know, really get to the, to those other levels?"
Right.
And again, just for the fact that I saw the same thing year after year come, you know, didn't you run this? Wasn't this done already? And so to me, there wasn't a plan before they really got to the high school level of what was happening, so.
Okay, that's good feedback, thank you.
I have a quick question. Is it on the, is there no science class in middle school or is it just science kids that are?
Oh, the science class.
Okay. I was like, we're seeing kids over here, I'm like, I know that.
No, the kids with the elementary.
Thank you. Okay.
Bonnie Mark said, not to counter what you said, because I don't have the longevity perspective. I have a seventh grader, so I could comparison of six to seven, but I would say my child's science class right now is the most rigorous class she has. I don't know what you take out of that. Clearly, you have to break down MCAST scores, but you mentioned the growth percentile being one of the bigger indicators. That in comparison to, are the children compared to a cohort within this district or is that a state?
Statewide, yeah.
Okay. And then when this data is looked at, I know it's like this more global perspective, I hear from teachers, they don't get the same breakdown that parents get, which obviously has a lot of data to it, but I think there is some value in it because you may have a child that's scoring 100% in multiple choice, but then when you come to a response, there are zeros. So it's really, you're looking at one big number. So I guess the question is, is are there people at the district level looking at kids that are in a growth percentile range? I think you mentioned like 40 to 60%.
Forty to 60, right.
Like, are we looking at those kids that are 0 to 30% in growth and are we doing intervention with those students to try to determine why they, their growth went backwards?
Yeah, that's a good question, boy. I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, we look at, typically if you have a kid that's at 0 to 30% growth, it's not a surprise and they're already getting intervention somewhere. We may have had an assessment somewhere else along the line that surfaced that, but if we didn't, then absolutely those. Principals mostly doing it at the elementary level and the department heads are doing it at the secondary level. You know, looking at that data. That's a good question.
I think also too, back to the point of, you know, this is just a snapshot of the MCAST results, I do think that's important to also look at our students when they're graduating from Medfield High School and what they're majoring in and what paths they're pursuing. I know three years ago, I did some analysis on this with the guidance counselors and we had a very high percentage of students who were majoring in STEM-related fields, so science, technology, engineering, and math. And it was very high. And it was high in comparison to other schools that we compare ourselves to. So when you're talking about comparing our kids for the future and preparing them for their career paths, we're doing a good job on that. And we may have these snapshots along the way, but we really should take pride in the fact that we are graduating the kids that are going to MIT and going and majoring in science and technology and engineering and math-related fields. We're really good at that. So there's something, something's working along the way and I just think it's important.
The last four years is hard?
Yeah, we're really good at, we're really good at an high school. I think that's true. And that's not a knock on, that's not, I mean, I, my kids had some great science teachers at Blake, I don't mean to, but I think we, we are much more coordinated about it at the high school. Maybe that's because the curriculum is more rigid or more uniform at the high school than it is statewide than it is, you know, middle schools can kind of do what they want with that. And I certainly don't want to be heard to be complaining about the teaching.
Right, no, I, I take that.
But I, we're not achieving as well, you know? I think it's true, our high school science curriculum is doing great.
Anything else? Hey, Carrie.
I think they consider both middle school programs that, you know, developmentally, they're looking at science as something that, you know, you're studying across the board in multiple disciplines, so you're not diving in specifically the way they are in high school. And that is getting at the way the brain's development, the developing in ad lysis, that could be the benefit. In addition, the fact that they are putting in, like you said, a lot of maker's face time and, you know, thinking time, scientific method time, so that, so that they're teaching the kids really to solve problems that may not be the specific.
Won't be tested on that, right?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask you, Jeff, when is the communication and collaboration MCAS and the arts and creativity version of those tests coming?
Yeah, they're coming out very soon.
Don't hold your breath on that one, Leo.
On points, on our creativity and art.
I'm sorry, I don't want to cut off the conversation, but it's getting close to ten. I haven't had dinner and my productivity is kind of bottomed out soon, so.
Well, it is close to ten, okay.
Do you like a seltzer?
There are studies about how long the committees can be productive in a meeting.
You're not yourself.
I'm sure.
I have four or five more.
Yeah, that's right. That is very good, though.
Does anybody have a snack for Mr. Morrison?
No, no, I got one. Apparently I've turned into a hungry diva.
Did anybody bring the emergency kit?
Like De Niro.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
What do I have next?
Enrollment.
Enrollment projections.
Enrollment.
So in your packet, you have the enrollment projections from Nesdeck. Again, that's the historically, the firm we've used and almost everyone else in New England uses as well to forecast enrollment. Different than what we, obviously a different method, different company than what MSBA uses, but I think you see in those numbers, very similar results from projections that MSBA has. I put in your packet, the 2017 and the 2018 projections. And you'll see that there's definitely a difference in those numbers. I think that, you know, looking at the 2018 projection, which we just received on the 26th of October, if you look at the projection by grade 2023, 3,415, which is very similar to what MSBA was, was looking at. And you look at it previous year, that same timeframe, 28, 2028 to 2029, they, actually, 2027 to 2028 was 2,980. So certainly we see a jump. They also did that birth to kindergarten ratio like MSBA did. And again, the feedback I got was they, only Sudbury and Hopington are close to us on those. So I think it's, you know, I know there was some, some feedback that some of us got from folks in town about what those numbers really are and that somehow we're making them larger. We weren't making them larger. That's, MSBA took our data from October 1 and they ran and did theirs. Nesdeck takes our October 1 numbers and then they do their projections based on live births, all of that. And they're coming out with similar results. So if anyone thinks that the kids aren't coming, they're mistaken because they're coming. Again, I'll just put it out there again. This does not take consideration anything that happens at hospital, at the hospital. Nothing.
Or anything else that's not yet permitted.
Or anything else that's, that's not in the permitting process. So if, if something happens at the land formerly the Medfield State Hospital and we have a development up there, all bets are off with these numbers. They're gonna go through the roof.
Jeff, is there any data on how accurate Nesdeck has been historically?
I guess that's who you asked, right, Chris? I mean, I think if, they do about 400 districts a year in New England, they're kind of the only game in town with this kind of stuff, you know.
Right. But I mean, we have, I have at least as long, from the budget books, as long as I've been here.
Right.
The projections, we, we can compare them against, you know, actuals. I mean, they, their change from 2017 to 2018 is the biggest I've ever seen.
Right.
So maybe they're reacting to the, maybe they're reacting in some way to what the state is saying. But I just wonder.
But they wouldn't have had the numbers from the state.
Yeah.
You know, they, this is their own, they wouldn't have had those. It's a big jump from last year.
It's a monster.
I mean, it's pretty, when I say, you know, years past, it's been like maybe five or six kids difference from year to year, or maybe 10 kids tops. Not like this.
Well, they, so in 2017, they projected a, what is that, 15, 10-year growth of 13%?
Right.
Now they're projecting a 10-year growth of 32, almost 32%?
Correct.
I should get my house on the market.
How many bedrooms?
What's that?
What, are you gonna fill them?
Yeah.
Don't do it.
And you see where the numbers are. The numbers are the lower levels.
Talking about great communities, we're not very good at all. No.
Building on the corner of High and Elm Street, or east of Elm Street in Waffle.
Yes.
Their, selectmen is hoping that Medfield residents, when they decide to sell a property, are gonna go live in those condos.
Because I'll go for a two hour, 10 minute, I'm gonna commute to a two hour, five minute commute.
But there's no parking. If you want to like the hole, you would get to the park, right?
All right.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
All right. So that's, you know, just the information there. We continue to deal with this and plan for it. But it's another data point that's telling us that a lot of kids are coming.
We're gonna need a bigger boat.
Yep.
All right, communication.
Just an update on the app development. So tomorrow, Owen and I are doing a conference call with them. They developed the actual design of what the app's going to look like now. We're gonna look at making it available in the Apple iTunes store, which is something that we have to go through a process on that. So again, it's taking a little bit longer than I'd like, but it's, it's a process and we're working with that same team. And, you know, Owen's been great. He's been helping us out with that. And, you know, we're, I should have another report, another update in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, any questions about it?
Carrie.
At the risk of having stuff thrown at me because Chris is gonna pass out here in the last six minutes. Big believer in technology. And I think one of the things that the district should be proud of is the investments, the digital learning day. There's a lot of leadership in the district on technology. The one area I, I'm not sure we're leading in, and I mentioned it at the first school committee meeting, was around privacy. And in particular, you know, if you're looking at the Massachusetts Student Privacy Alliance, where towns like Wayland and Hopington and Dedham have a standard contract that they're using with all the digital providers that goes through and lays out very clearly what parents and students' digital rights are. And I think as we're teaching folks to use technology, I work in digital marketing, so I know the creepy things that can be done and, you know, by the wrong people. But I'm not sure all the students know it. And when I teach at BC, I, we do a debate on Apple, Microsoft, and Google, and this topic comes up. And it's amazing even the college students who are using, living on their devices don't understand how much is being collected. And so I think it's a learning opportunity for us as a district to consider either joining the Student Privacy Alliance, or at least coming up with policies that are transparent around what information is being shared. What's great about this is Wayland actually has 172 different applications that are online that you can look at, use, all using, each of their vendors using the same contract. And you know, it's a standard thing. And it's sort of gaining momentum. It might take some pressure off the school committee. They'd obviously still have to review it, but it's a standardized contract that goes through that. I don't know if we've looked at.
So we are a member of that.
Okay.
Yes, we are a member of that. Owen is actually on the steering committee on the board there.
Are we using?
Wait, so then we're also part of, one of the nice things is tech, is that as the board directors, we tried to leverage our, our group on, on tech is how can we, because Cambridge is the real leader in this. Cambridge has a full-time attorney that just, all they do, you know, they do this work. So is there a way that we can leverage the work that Cambridge is doing as a collaborative? So we've done that now. If you go on the tech website, there's a whole thing on student privacy that we're a part of. So basically, whenever we have something that comes up, whether it be Aspen or you name it, we send it to tech and then they go through and they use their, you know, their lawyers and their, and then they report back to us on it. So, you know, we're a part of it. We're not at Wayland. We're not even at Westwood. We gotta do better on it. But we are a part of, of this group and we're working on that.
So just one follow-up. So if we're, if we're doing these, will we be getting, you know, as parents and kids, some kind of opt-in? Or, you know, I know with GDPR, which has nothing to do yet with the United States about sort of what's being collected, that anyone could see exactly what's being collected on their profile? Is that?
So what we've, in how my understanding of it, is whatever piece of technology we have, we give to them, they say, yes, there's gonna be a contract in place because they're, you know, they're living up to the expectation criteria that the school district has set, or no. So if you go on that particular site.
Yeah, they decline it and.
Yeah, it says some of the decline and some of the approval. So that's, we're in that process now. Again, we've been a, a member of that for, since the beginning, I think. We just, if you go on our, where we are, we don't have a list like, like Wayland and Westwood.
Well, and just a standard privacy policy. You know, I haven't seen that on the, on the parent side of it. I haven't seen that. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'll, I'll echo that. So I was, I worked with Steve Smith and Mark Racine out of Boston Public when I was at Newton, who all, because we could afford legal teams, were vetting that process out. And it is a process where the companies do opt-in. I would say it's, and I knew Medfield was a part of it, I'd say, but there's nothing that's gonna replace actual awareness down to the classroom level. And some of you know that's what I do for a living now is discovery of those applications. And for the 172 applications that are probably being used in Wayland, it's probably closer to 400 that are actually being used. So, and that's our findings across the country. So it is, it is good that that's in place. And it's really raised the awareness of the developers. But it does circle right back to, it's, that's not gonna shield us from awareness of where our data's going and what teachers are filling out for rosters and putting the kids' names in and things like that.
I think back to when technology was first used in the classroom, when teachers were getting floppy disks at a, at a conference and they'd stick them in a computer and there was no licensing or any of that.
Right.
It, it reminds me of that a little bit of the Wild, Wild West with apps now.
Yep.
You know, because teachers are seeing great things that they want to use and they want their kids to use it. But there has to be a process. So we have a administrative tech team that, that meets every month. And that's our ongoing agenda item is, is formulating that process so that, again, like what Mary talked about earlier with that, you know, all these things take staff, dedicated staff people just to do this.
It does.
Which we don't have at this point right now. So we're kind of doing as best we can with it. And, you know, we're, we're on our way.
I think it's exciting. I think, you know, I'm one of the few people in the room who still remembers pulling the Thursday packet out of somebody's backpack, trying to make sure that it got in there and that the packet got back in. And, and now it's online, but you have to kind of go look for it and download it. And, you know, depending on the school, it's kind of arranged in a weird way. Obviously, now the, the high school pushes out an email to me every week. But I think it'd be useful, all of that stuff is impossible to read on the phone because it ends up largely being PDFs. And so to see it in app.
Format it for a phone.
Yeah, to be able to know when the kids are having a feel-like-a-game or, you know, the play is on, all of one place and not have to. Our website is kind of, you know, it's mobilized, optimized for mobile.
It's not too bad for a phone, yeah.
But you're not able to, to do it. I think you'd be able to do if it's all consolidated.
It's gonna be really nice. It's gonna put an impact on Melissa Rota updating the lunch menus on Facebook. I will say that that's my number one source for lunch menus.
It doesn't have a privacy thing.
And now Facebook knows what my cat has for lunch. Thank you, yeah.
As long as she continues, continues to have the cookie raffle for when I, when I cancel school. That's, that's all that matters.
All right.
So yeah, more to come on that.
Okay.
Certainly, we're, we're working away. And I think before we, we, we met with them, with Aptige a lot before we decided to go with them. And one of the, the one meeting we had, and Michael was there as well, is we went through their privacy and Owen was just peppering them with questions. It was almost uncomfortable. He was nailing them with questions, just to make sure that this isn't an area we're gonna go down if, if the privacy piece isn't in place and we didn't feel comfortable with it. So he felt like it was, it was good and was solid. And, you know, I trust his judgment on that. That's what he does. So informational items. So a couple of things. MSBA sent us an email today.
Can I just come in one second? Sorry, thirty seconds.
Okay.
Robert Hurd, do you have any, I mean, I've heard crazy costs for this. I haven't seen anything about pilots. I haven't seen anything about backup plans. I haven't seen anything. This seems like we're just doing it. Like, we're going ahead, that's it, all set and done. Where's the, where's the plan part? Like, it just seems like, like, do we, we're gonna roll this out and it's just gonna be great and everyone's gonna think it's great. And then, like, what's our, what's our, how much do we have in, like, I've heard three years, $30,000. I've heard different things. I, I mean, what's our, I mean, what's our, this isn't good.
So my first.
We're not, we're not, but this isn't what we expect.
So my first advice to you is that if you want to have a question answered correctly with the amount of money that you ask us, which is great, you're doing that because $30,000 isn't even close to what it is.
Okay.
But again, people are able to post things without any accountability. So it's $13,000.
Okay.
It is a one-time $9,000 setup fee to develop the app. And then we pay per student each year.
So that'd be $13,000 a year.
No. So it's a $9,000 one-time setup fee. That is part of the $13,000.
Okay.
So it'd be closer to four and change a year.
Okay. So that's, that's where my concern lies.
Yeah, sure.
You know, started getting thrown around.
Absolutely. Things get thrown around all the time. Appreciate it.
This is coming out of the technology fund and not away from saying hiring teachers, right? I mean, I think if you look at the, also the strategic plan for director and tweets and everything else, how do we really make that something that you can use, you can opt into? So.
It's an opt-in app. It's not something I require.
Yeah.
So in terms of MSBA, in the letter we got today, the email, so we finally got the, the final Ralph Weelock Elementary School Project is finally complete, final audit. And the town, I'll pass this out to you so you have a copy, the town will be given their reimbursement of $159,832. And this is for the Boiler Project. So it goes through many, many, many processes to get to this point.
It's still a lot faster than it used to be.
Oh, yes. Yeah, absolutely. It used to be to the very end. So they've already given the town a set amount. The last payment the town will get will be tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday, for $46,402.
And that goes in the general fund?
It does, general fund, yes. Total eligibility project cost was $400,001, 184. So that's just something to have. I got a copy. Mike Marcucci got one, Mike Sullivan, Georgia, Joy, and then the project manager in the Department of Revenue. So that money is gonna be wired to the town on Thursday. So that closes out this whole project. It's complete. And it takes, seems to take longer than it really needs to, but that's part of the MSBA.
Well, I think it's great that we, you know, we recovered quite a bit of money for the, for the cost there. Playing by their rules is something we usually have to do.
Right.
It's a lot faster. Like I say, it's a lot faster than it used to be. And I, you know, altogether, I think we've had, you know, almost 100, it's $160,000 from them that.
Right. It's pretty good.
Otherwise, we would've had to carry ourselves, so.
So that's just FYI. The other information that we got is that we have been, our Title One funding was cut by the federal government to zero.
That's not the first time that's happened.
No. So.
What was it? Cut from?
From.
Is it Michael? What was it?
Lot.
Eighty-two? Eighty-two, I think it was eighty-two. So when we called to discuss that with them, they used new data, which brings our at-risk slash poverty line below 2% in town. So you drop below 2%, you don't get Title One funds anymore. So it's, it's data that's about three years old. So that's kind of how they work. They're always about two or three years behind on the data. So they said that always an issue with towns like us that hover, it was a little over, it was almost three, I think, last time they did the assessment. So it doesn't mean we're not gonna get it in the future. It just means that we don't have it now and we.
Is that the current fiscal year?
Current fiscal year. All right. So we, we're paying, that's, that's all salaries pretty much. And a little bit money that goes to Montrose because they get to opt into some of that money. So we're working on that. I can let you know what we're gonna do with that, where we're gonna pay that salary out of the future, in the future, so we can get a sense of what, you know, what it is.
You have to find the money for this current.
For this current year, absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
Seventy-six now.
Seventy-six? Thank you.
Seventy-six, Trump owns the big break.
Yep. So I mean, that's one of the things that we, we talk about all the time during the budget season is that, you know, we make assumptions on the federal government, what we're gonna get. And then they don't let you know until after the fiscal year starts. So you're kind of stuck.
Can we just forward that? Does warrant committee get a copy of that?
No, but I'll let them know.
We'll send it to them.
Yeah, let them know.
Because we know they're getting an extra 46 coming in, so.
That's right.
That's right.
Extra 46 going to the general fund.
That's right.
And tomorrow is the doom and gloom.
Tomorrow, tonight is the doom and gloom, yes. And just a couple of things. So we have some of our teachers and one of our principals presenting ed tech teacher this week, which is tomorrow and Wednesday. So Jason Heim, Diane Horvath, and Nat Von Me presenting some of the great stuff they're doing here at Blake. So real proud of the work that they're doing. And again, always recognized by others for the great work that they're doing. That's all I have, Madam Chair. I know Chris is tired.
Yeah.
Am I the only one?
Yeah.
No.
Time change.
All right. Do we have any updates? Peter, anything to add last?
Everything's going well at the high school. I know the last meeting was, I think, maybe a week or two ago. So not much has changed since then. And I think, for the sake of time, I'll just say everything's going well.
Super. Thank you, Peter.
You got your name tag, Peter.
I was gonna say, that's a nice.
See, there's the communications part I was talking about, right there.
And I appreciate your questions to, to, to Mary earlier. So thank you for contributing. That's appreciated.
I just wanted to publicly give a shout out to the MCP for the successful fall ball this weekend. And I did maybe get a little text from someone who's on the board. And they are close to 50,000 that they have raised.
Fifty?
Fifty.
Fantastic.
Fifty. And on the tails of the science that we're talking about, that was one of, their fund of grant was to bring more science.
Correct.
So any little bit helps.
Super.
Yeah. And I'll be at the convention this weekend in place of Weelock, so.
I'll meet you for a stale Danish.
That was a great event Saturday night. A lot of people, a lot younger than me, so it's good to see. I mean, that's a big universe of people in this town. It was good to see that next generation coming in, into their own. Go vote. You voting tomorrow?
Right on.
I want to thank MCP as well for putting that on. It's my first Medfield prom, so. That's how I saw it on Facebook. So, and yeah, go vote tomorrow. Absolutely.
I mean, your fault for being on Facebook.
Yeah, I just read.
I spent a magical day in first grade last week. I just can't, I can't even get a earth glow. And that's about it. I'll be at the conference Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I'd like to send a shout out to my husband, who is an auxiliary school committee member for taking over a lot of these nights, but particularly those three days.
Super. And just Tracy Buckley is doing the yoga program for the teachers, which is so fantastic.